I'll the meeting to order. Chief Pitts, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sir.
Move your hat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, Ms. Saadra's, record Ms. Saadra's here, she just stepped away a minute. Richard Barthollet.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members, Mr. Klingler. I'm here actually at the recommendation of Councilperson Jarden, who suggested that as the President of RAD, either I or one of the people on the board should show up from time to time and give you an update on what RAD is doing, what we've been up to. For those who aren't familiar with RAD in the audience, it's a regional alliance for downtown, and our tagline is every great city has a great downtown. This month, we had a luncheon with Doug Newth, the Athletic Director from UNR, reporting on the upgrades to Mackey Stadium that are planned and what it will mean for the City of Reno and for downtown. And he talked about some other aspects of the athletic program, but it was very enlightening. In April and May, RAD, in conjunction with NAOP, will be holding two candidate forums, one for the mayoral candidates and one for the city council candidates, and those will be at Silver Legacy. We'll get an email out to everyone and have that posted and do some announcements, but that will be breakfast-type meeting, actually hosted by the Silver Legacy. And we did candidate forums last election cycle, and I think everybody that participated in those thought that they went pretty well. Those will be followed after the primary with another round of candidate forums that we'll be doing in partnership with KNPB, and we haven't even picked dates for those yet. We have three very active committees: Safe and Clean, Economic Influence, and Public Policy. The Safe and Clean Committee has been the longest-standing, and it tries to address those issues that make people have concerns about their personal safety, or they look around downtown and feel that it's not as clean as it should be. And we think we're making some pretty good progress. Our current initiative that is underway is a good neighbor agreement. We realize that the City of Reno can't do all the things that need to be done, and it really is up to the citizens and the business owners and the property owners, in many cases, to step forward and take care of things themselves. So this agreement sets out their rights and responsibilities and what they can and should be doing to help improve downtown. Alex Woodley has been participating in those meetings occasionally and has been extremely helpful. Ryan Goldhammer and Trevor Lepick, who are the proprietors of Noble Pipe Parlor, have been leading that effort, and it was interesting, they first came and were complaining about some things in downtown, and I said, "Well, I take that as an offer to volunteer to help," and they've been very active in helping since then. Economic Influence Committee has been working to try to bring some of the different districts in downtown up to the level of Midtown and Riverwalk, and get some active groups going to increase the level of notoriety and distinction and sort of increase the cachet of those different districts. And we're starting to have some real involvement with Riverwalk and Midtown and getting the other groups sort of organized, those that are not. I see I'm out of time, so I'll be back next month, I'll fill you in on life and culture, there's some really good things going on there as well, but we appreciate the activity that City of Reno's been doing to support our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Corbett.
Good afternoon, nice to see you all again, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Christopher Corbett, Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act. Gem County, Idaho defeats the NDAA 2 to 1. I know that sounds like a soccer score, but in a vote of 2 to 1, the Gem County Idaho Commission voted to prohibit the application of the laws of war, including under the National Defense Authorization Act, NDAA, 2001 Authorization for Use of Military Force, and any similar law or authority in Gem County. If you've forgotten, the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA is an annual federal law which typically authorizes funding for the armed forces. However, in 2012, two sections, Section 1021 and 1022, were slipped in. These sections authorize the President of the United States to order the military to detain any person indefinitely without charge or trial and apply the laws of war to U.S. soil. People Against the National Defense Authorization Act, Panda, has been facilitating local and state-level resistance to the NDAA, 2012 NDAA, for over two years. Founded in January 2012, Panda has introduced or pushed over 18 pieces of state legislation, including in Nevada, and also including in 2014 legislation in Arizona, Idaho, and Wyoming. On the local level, Panda has helped NDAA resistance leaders in four cities, including the capital of New York, prohibit the NDAA's detention provisions and the laws of war in their city. When Panda Idaho showed up with over 40 people to a Gem County Idaho Commissioners' meeting, the Chair of the Commission ordered over 30 people to leave. I don't know, is that legal? After unceremoniously kicking their citizens out of the meeting, the Commission debated sending a letter to Congress, as well as voting on the resolution. The resolution drafted by the Patriot Coalition would go further than a simple letter, in that it would recognize the laws of war, including under the NDAA, as unconstitutional and therefore unlawful in their county. This would prohibit its use and require local, state, and federal law enforcement to prevent its application in Gem County. Regardless of the actions of the Chair, thanks to the leadership of Commissioner Mark Raquel and Panda, Jason Casella, the Restoring Constitutional Governance Resolution, RCG, passed 2 to 1. In passing the RCG resolution, Gem County, Idaho, became the first county in the nation to completely ban the laws of war, including the NDAA in its jurisdiction. I don't know why we can't do anything like that here. In closing, I just want to state that Panda founder, national activist, and public speaker Dan Johnson will be visiting Reno on Sunday, March 16, on UNR campus in the William Roggio Building, Room 2030 or the room next door, I think it might have been moved. From 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, this is open to the public, and everyone is invited to attend. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brendan Nance.
Hello, I'm a property owner here in this area that you're trying to expand the police units, and I guess what I want to express is that I don't think it should fall on the shoulders of hiring more police, but on the people that own the buildings. I too own a building that is low rent, slow income, but I take the responsibility of screening my people, of not having overnight guests, of not having people there after 7:00. I have a man that circles the building three or four times a night to make sure it's safe, that nobody's loitering, nobody's sitting around, that no drug deals are going on. I think that by throwing the responsibility back on the city, who doesn't really understand the types of people that they're dealing with, isn't the answer. It should be, and I really don't have an answer at this point, but I did think this, is the people like myself that rent to these type of people, you soon learn to know them. You learn how they think, you learn how they work, and you learn how to clean it up around your building. You learn how to work with the people that want a nice place to stay but don't have the funds to stay, you know, in a nice place. And so I bet if you pulled a bunch of people together, like myself, that would understand the laws, I bet we could pull some answers together. A lot of the people that own a lot of the buildings around here that have all this crime don't even live in Reno, let alone America. They basically take the money, whoever has money in their hand, they take them for a week, for a night, they can do anything they want in these rooms, and that's where the crime just keeps escalating, because they don't care, they don't put the money back into the buildings, like El Cortez down on 4th Street is just a shell of a building now. I know how many problems they have down there. I have Lake Mill Lodge on the corner, people don't even come to my building sometimes because they know Lake Mill Lodge is right there on the corner where the police is there at least three to four to five times a week. I don't think I've had the police at my building maybe three times a year, because I take responsibility. I am a responsible owner, and so I guess that's what I was trying to express, is I don't know, again, the laws, all of the laws, but I'd be willing to learn them, to see what other ideas we could come up with without having more policemen. And so maybe I don't understand a lot of things, and I'd be willing to listen, but I just wanted to say that as a property owner, that I don't think increasing my costs, when I'm a responsible person, is going to solve anything. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam DeNay.
Sam DeNay, the encyclopedia of Reno government and the most trusted name in Reno government, along with the other D-E-H-N-E, DeNay. I have to spell that name out, because in the Reno Gazette Regurgitator, I found out when the reporters start to write a story about D-E-H-N-E, this fellow right here, they get to DEH and suddenly their computer crashes. And that's how diabolically afraid and jealous they are of the name D-E-H-N-E. But I do find it interesting that their most important story today is a question as to whether or not you're tall enough to put money in the parking meter. I guess the good news is that at least they don't have another one of those hundreds of disconjurecuticulated pictures and thousands of name bites of the puppets and shills that the Reno Gazette and their minions are trying to recruit to run against the best candidate for mayor, D-E-H-N-E. By the way, this young Marine Corps veteran was the challenger for mayor last go-around. He was pretty darned close to beating the powerful incumbent, Mr. Kachel. Just, that was not worth a chortle. At any rate, that's okay. At any rate, as I continue, you know, the Reno Gazette is so diabol, and the rest of the media, for that matter, speaking of that fellow over there, he probably, look at the handcuffs he's got on. If he puts a picture of me back to his boss, I guarantee he will be fired. At any rate, we have an interesting story here. We've got a ballot, a Reno City Council ballot, that has two DeNays, D-E-H-N-E, two DeNays, a father and a son, and we got a ballot that has two Marine Corps veterans on it. Have you even seen anything about that? All you hear about is this career politician vote down there by the judges and a few other nonsensical things like that. As a matter of fact, I can take the blame or the credit for the career politician decision if you even want to go there. They want to say the fellow who filed the motion was responsible for that, no. It was Sam DeNay telling the judges what to do. Sam talks, the judges listen, as well as other people, although they don't always give Sam DeNay the credit. As a matter of fact, I sort of digress here, I have to read a couple of, and this is all you're going to see, these little cards, no billboards, oh, and by the way, you voters out there in YouTube land and TV land, vote for the person who takes in the least campaign contribution bribes. I like a couple of these little soundbites on here. One, "Respect our protectors." I never see that by any of the other candidates, or anybody for that matter. He also says, this is really the favorite one, when he is elected mayor, D-E-H-N-E is elected mayor, assuming we have an honest vote count this time, he says, "They're going to replace the bureaucrats' caviar," caviar that the bureaucrats get from the taxpayers, he's going to replace the caviar with fish sticks.
Mark Raquel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and City Councilmembers and City Manager. Sorry, Sam, I'm going to be the next mayor.
May I respond to that?
No, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Raquel, and my mission in life is to educate students and the community about what happens when someone gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury and get off track. Through much pad, People Against Drunk Driving, I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. I had a car crash and rolled eight times. I was not wearing my seatbelt, it wasn't mandatory back then, and I was ejected and the car landed on my head. It put me to coma for a month, in the hospital for five and a half months more. Once I regained consciousness, I had to learn to talk, walk, and even eat all over again. Due to my traumatic brain injury, I can't even do everyday tasks. I ride, I walk with a walker and have to take the bus everywhere. And my life has completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Parents, don't drive with your kids drunk with your kids in a car. Not your kids, not your kids that are drunk, but you, please don't with you being drunk. And kids listen to your parents, they're young ones, and listen to your teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you, they're there to help you. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, having no other public, you got any other public comment cards? I'll close the public comment section, I'll bring it back to the City Manager's announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first announcement I'd like to make this morning is regarding the Reno's Accelerator Loan Program. The City of Reno's Accelerator Loan Program will be closing its application period on Saturday, March 23. If there are any startups interested in obtaining this early-stage financing, we urge them to visit acceleratereno.com and submit an application. Questions can also be directed to Nicola Kerslake, the Program Administrator, at 775-623-7116. Mr. Mayor and Council have some exciting announcements to make today. The first is want to recognize staff for the recognition we received for a Cashman Good Government Award. This award was presented for the Business License Improvement Project geared towards new businesses. Four City of Reno departments, building, fire, zoning, and county health, worked together with a consultant to streamline the approval process, so want to recognize our staff, thank them for their dedicated service and their commitment to excellence, and we were recognized for our achievements, so.
Super.
Three other awards that the City of Reno recently received were the Addy Awards. City of Reno won two Gold Addy Awards for Creative Excellence in the field of marketing and communications on March 7. The awards were given for the Only Rain in the Drain, Only Rain in the Storm Drain Campaign, try and say that, implemented by the Office of Communications and Community Engagement in conjunction with the Public Works Environmental Engineering Department and the Storm Water Committee with Western Regional Water Commission funding support. The campaign was also awarded the Best of Show Judges' Choice Award. So congratulations to all of the staff on all of these awards. I think it's just a reflection of their excellent work that they do every day for the City of Reno.
Are you finished now?
I'm finished. I don't have any more awards to...
Well, there's one you left out.
God, don't do it. Don't do it.
I think that before we really get into the meat of the subject, we really need to sing happy birthday to our City Manager. Our City Manager turned 44, and we've got to sing happy birthday, so everybody stand up so we can sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear San Antonio. Happy birthday to you.
Where's his cake? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone, thank you.
And there will not be any cake. We just can't afford a cake.
That's a good answer.
Before we go to the approval of the agenda, pulled item G1, Todd Boundaries was pulled due to an error in noticing, item G1. I guess it's old age that made you forget it. Go ahead and tell us, what are your feeling, tell us.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot one recognition, actually. Want to recognize and congratulate Kate Thomas, Director of Office of Management and Budget, and her staff. City of Reno was notified recently that we received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the Current Budget from the Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement by Kate Thomas and her staff, so just wanted to recognize that.
Fantastic. Now can I go with the agenda? Pulled items, as I said, item G1, Todd Boundaries, secondary corridors because of a noticing error, we're pulling that one. Proclamations, items C1 and C2, we'd like to move the consent agenda up before the And we will move items H2, Resolution to Establish Regional Medical Services, item J1, Leased with First T of Northern Nevada, and item J5, the Catalyst Fund, Garlock Printing, will all be moved up after the consent agenda, and then presentations will follow after the consent agenda, or after the item H1, H2, J1, and J5. Any other changes you want to make? There, item F1, North Virginia, or North Sierra Street abandonment, and item F2, Petition to Expand the Downtown Police District, will be heard then. There is not a public hearing this evening, there will be a joint Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency meeting today. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, on the redevelopment meeting, the one item on that agenda has been pulled, but because we posted the meeting, we have to open it and take public comment.
Absolutely, I didn't read the rest of the script, thank you very much, sir. Any other changes to the agenda you want to make or anything? Chair entertain a motion, have a motion, have a second, have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for February 26?
Mayor, I suggest a change to those or a clarification by May. On item L15, where we voted to hire outside counsel to, for the purpose of providing representation related to medical marijuana establishments, that's a, there's three sentences, two sentences there, and it says, "They agreed that the city manager should act as contract administrator, comma, with assistance from the city attorney's office." I thought that was with assistance from the city attorney's office, if so requested. So I wonder if we could just clarify that. Okay, I think that was left to the manager to decide if he wanted to bring in the city attorney on that.
That's right.
With that clarification to be made by the city clerk's office, I'll motion to adopt these minutes.
Approval of the minutes, have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursement, any notices or anything from anybody? Chair entertain a motion, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, we'll do the proclamations. Do the proclamations. American Red Cross Month. After the presentation, I would like for all of the council to come in, stand in the center, and some of the board members of the Red Cross are going to be here for a photograph with us.
This is great, I'm so glad I get to read this proclamation. You guys are truly where the rubber meets the road, so I'm glad to get to do this. So Clara, dear friend, I've known you for quite a long time, so I'm excited. Clara Andriola is the CEO of the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross, and I'm excited today to read the proclamation that March is American Red Cross Month. Whereas March is Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need, and the American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day. They volunteer their time, take lifesaving courses, or provide financial donations to help those in need, and we would like to remember our heroes in Reno, Nevada, who give the help to people in need. They work tirelessly to help in times of disaster, when someone needs food, shelter, or the comfort of a helping hand. They provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and teach lifesaving classes in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responded to hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, and wildfires, and the tragedy at the Boston Marathon and Typhoon Huyang in the Philippines. And when an injured service member ended up in a hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offered comfort. When a hospital patient needed blood, the American Red Cross blood donors helped them. When a lifeguard jumped in to save a drowning child, or someone stepped up to help a heart attack victim, the American Red Cross was there. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, our community depends on the American community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time and money to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, I, Neoma Jordan, on behalf of Mayor Robert A. Koschel, Senior, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as American Red Cross Month.
I'd just like to thank the mayor and the city council and everyone for all the work that we do, because it is a team effort, and the partnership we have with all emergency management, law enforcement, fire. It's amazing, and so it's just an honor and a privilege, and thank you. We're celebrating heroes in our community on March 26 at the Atlantis. Unfortunately, it's during the same time that the city council is meeting, so we will check, Mr. Mayor, the schedule next time. But we would encourage everyone to come out on March 26 and celebrate real heroes in our community that have done heroic acts that are beyond imagination. So thank you for everything. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And if council will come stand in here, and then if y'all come here. Ms. Edger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in celebration of Brain Injury Awareness Month. Whereas every year, over 1.7 million Americans sustain a traumatic brain injury about every 18 seconds. And whereas among those who survive, 275,000 people per year must learn to cope with lifelong losses of function. And 5.3 million Americans, 2% of the United States population, currently live with disabilities resulting from a brain injury. And whereas motor vehicle accidents cause 17% of brain injuries, falls 35%, assaults in firearms, 26%, sports and recreation and other activities, 22%. And whereas an estimated 200,000 children are hospitalized each year with brain trauma, and 30% sustain permanent disabilities, this is increasing with awareness. Every year in the United States, 50,000 children sustain bicycle-related brain injuries. Of those, over 400 die. And males are twice as likely to sustain a brain injury than females. And young men between the ages of 15 and 24 have the highest rate of injury. Whereas every year, 177,000 Americans will die as a result of traumatic brain injury. And whereas on Saturday, March 29, Nevada's Third Annual Walk for Thought is being held in the Sparks Marina at 10:00 a.m.
That's okay.
Has it changed?
Yeah.
To, all right. You can correct that for us. Now, therefore, the mayor of the City of Reno, Robert A. Koschel, and this council do hereby proclaim March 2014 as Brain Injury Awareness Month. And we do have Teresa, the president of the association, accepting.
Thank you so much. I will. It's actually March 29 is the correct date, but it's at the Double Diamond Athletic Club, and it's, we're calling it push-pull and drag this year. And our reasoning behind that is, is that we want everybody to come out and be their best. We want them to finish. We want them to know that we're not willing to settle with a traumatic brain injury and that there's constant room for improvement. So our biggest goals this year in raising funds is because we don't have any facility here in northern Nevada that is specific for traumatic brain injuries, is to create a day center where someone has to go and improve. Our partnership with Double Diamond this year has been special. I don't know if anybody knows my specific story. I'm going to let Josh tell it. But I had a son that was a professional athlete, suffer a severe traumatic brain injury. And I didn't know what those words meant. I had no idea. And my journey has been long and hard. It's been rewarding. I've been very blessed. But I know that my story is not the same for other people. And Double Diamond has helped us in setting up a exercise program this year for the people that will be involved with the push-pull and drag. And we are seeing results. We are seeing results with people after 15 years of having, not being able to walk, and we're getting them to walk. And they will be walking in this push-pull and drag on the 29th. So I appreciate this proclamation, and I believe that next year, we will be able to come to you and let you know that we do have a day center for people to go to based on our efforts and work. And so I'd like to let Josh share with you a little bit of his passion based on what he's dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Moros, and I am a severe traumatic brain injury. It was not only, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not only an honor, but it's a blessing to be able to speak in front of you all today. Imagine. Imagine at 16, living your life for a dream, eating, breathing, and sleeping for that dream. Imagine at 16, being the youngest to ever become a professional off-road motorcycle racer. Imagine at 16, being asked to represent the USA in the prestigious International Six Days Enduro, or what we call the Olympics of off-road racing. Imagine at 16, living a rock star lifestyle, competing with some of the fastest racers and riders in, on, sorry, in the planet, and feeling like you've made it. I was on top of the world. Imagine within a blink of an eye, it goes black. It remains black. You hear voices. You see lights. You're floating around to awake from a coma 24 days later. Imagine upon awakening, you're paralyzed, not able to walk nor talk, and being told you have suffered a severe traumatic brain injury. Imagine upon awakening... Skip the card. Oh, did this last time. So yeah, suffered a severe traumatic brain injury. And behind the scenes for me, it meant one thing, getting back on the motorcycle. But what I didn't realize is it's not an injury you can just bounce right back from. It's an injury that happens to someone else, right? It's never supposed to happen to you. Well, I suffered an injury only 10% survived from, and of that 10%, only 1% have some sort, well, 1% have some sort of physical or mental disabilities. And part of me thought my life was over after my accident. Learning how to redo everything was unbearable at times. Nothing was easy, and I was being judged. For the first time in my life, I wanted to quit, but I am not a quitter. I kept pushing forward and looking for a breakthrough. And when things got tough, I just worked harder. My career as a professional off-road motorcycle racer is sidelined for the time being since I can't afford another hit to my head. I'm realizing my life has a true meaning of giving back versus racing. Let's fast forward to that day in the desert on August 16, 2008. I realized that my faith, dedication, training, and nutrition to become the youngest in history to be, to become an off-road, professional off-road motorcycle racer has some of the key components to saving my life. I felt passionate about sharing and bringing more awareness about this injury called traumatic brain injury. I have joined, I have joined the board of the Head Injury Association of Northern Nevada as running their youth, their youth program. As I continue my journey and having, and having a voice, I'm hoping to share with others my experience to make a difference. March is Brain Injury Awareness Month, and each year we arrange a walk. And this year, we're really focused on exercise, nutrition, and the attitude to never, never give up. We are encouraging everyone to come out and participate in my push-pull or drag 5K. I'm hoping we have your support for the Head Injury Association of Northern Nevada and our cause to raise more awareness about traumatic brain injuries. And our big goal, to have a day center for individuals with, with brain injuries to come and become the best they can be. Again, thank you, Bob, and all the councilmen for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
I'm going to go pass out.
(applause)
March 29. Double Diamond Athletic. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. There's one presentation I messed up. I want to move up right now. Item D1, Service Medal and Certificate of Commendation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. With me this afternoon to issue these awards is Deputy Chief Robinson, Deputy Chief Venzon from the Reno Police Department, Battalion Chief Cochran from Reno Fire. To my left, the two recipients, Officer Ira Coffey and Officer Michael Hicks. Before we get started, I would like to thank the council for the practice that you've implemented for the last couple of years to recognize people in the city that go above and beyond really the regular call for duty. And I know it takes a little bit of your time, but this means a lot to the men and women serving in the Reno Police Department, those that have been recognized before you previously in other departments, and to their families. And with that, Deputy Chief Tom Robinson will read the certificates.
Thank you. Good afternoon. On January 14, I'm sorry, January 5, 2014, Officer Michael Hicks and Officer Ira Coffey arrived at a structured fire at 735 Aiken Street. Officers Hicks and Coffey checked the apartment and saw an elderly resident sitting in her wheelchair with obvious severe burns still inside. Using extraordinary effort and while assuming significant personal risk, both officers entered the still-burning apartment, rescued the resident, and carried her to an awaiting ambulance. And for these efforts, Officer Michael Hicks and Officer Ira Coffey are awarded the Reno Police Department Medal of Meritorious Service.
Mr. Mayor, there's one more presentation from, from RFD with your respects. Deputy Chief? Battalion Chief, excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Cochran, Division Chief of Reno Fire Department, on behalf of Michael Hernandez. And I'm here with some members of the Reno Fire Department who are in the back to recognize and express our gratitude to these brave officers as well. I'm sure in their rational minds, they would agree that running into a building is probably not the best idea, but I think their instincts, their training, and their desire to help took over, and they did what they did, and for that, we honor them.
You didn't want to say anything to them? They don't want to say anything?
No, they don't want to say anything. All right, last, I thought you wanted me to say something, so I better not.
In closing, Honorable Mayor and Council, the men and women of the Reno Police Department love serving, and we appreciate the support of that love of service. Thank you.
You live and learn as mayor. Sometimes you change the agenda as we go along. Item D2, Ashley Jennings, co-founder of Girl Made Accelerator Program. Would you come forward, please?
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Koschel. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak about my passion. So I'm, I'm the founder and CEO of Girl Made, and what our, our main mission is to help women to, to play big. So do I use these arrows to change the slides? Right here? So I'm going to give you guys a little bit of statistics on where we see women right now. So 35% of women founders are bringing higher return, higher returns for investors. 80% of women hold the household buying power. 12% of women-led companies bring more revenue than male-owned companies. So if, if we're seeing that women are bringing 35% higher returns to investors, why are so few of them founding startups? And how much money is being left on the table as a result? Only 3% of tech startups are actually ran by women. Only 3%, 13% of women-led startups are being funded. And only 25 of the Fortune 500 CEOs are women. So as you can see, we have a long ways to go. So where are we seeing women right now? We're seeing them in multi-level marketing, small business owners, and we're also seeing them, we're starting to see more game changers. So more, more startups, more high-growth startups, technology startups, and also more B-corporates as well. So benefit corporations that have a triple bottom line, so they're not just worried about getting higher returns to their investors. But they also have a social good component as well. So what Girl Made tries to do is we try to bring people into, bring women specifically into the bottom two categories. So that would be more game changers, more ideas that are changing millions of people's lives. And examples of those would be Airbnb, Tesla, which we might actually be, be seeing here in the near future in Reno. And things like amazon.com, Etsy, the Honest Company, Ben &amp; Jerry's, Dansco. These are the, these are the categories that we're looking to move women into. So we want more women to solve big hairy problems. So what we do is we run an accelerator program, and it's a three-month program. We get 50 mentors from around the world. And these mentors are the highest caliber mentors that we can find in the, in the specific verticals that each startup in our program is in. So if we have a software-as-a-service vertical, or a team that's in soft, that is a software-as-a-service team, then we find mentors that are, that have crushed it in that vertical. And we get them to mentor our teams for one hour. It's a hurdle-based mentorship system. So it's awesome because we, we get these really, really, these people who have these extraordinarily tight schedules, who are, you know, traveling around the world, making millions of dollars to actually help our teams, because we're not asking them to be mentors for life, mentors for months. The rest of the program goes as follows. So we have 10 teams. One female co-founder on each team is required for the teams to be in the program. And then we have one coworking space, and what is now known as Startup Row, which is Arlington, between Arlington and Virginia on First Street. And then we give them $18,000 in seed money. And that's in exchange for 6% of the equity in their company. So we're, we're betting large on these companies, and we're putting in the time to, to get them from product to scalability. And we're expecting them to have exits or big returns, and that's how we make our money. So I just want to share with you a little bit about the teams that we had this fall and just sort of highlight them. We have a couple of the teams in the room. Edgeulock and Easykeeper. Would you guys stand up, please? So we have Patrick Grimes from Edgeulock. And Edgeulock is a, is a really unique product. And what it does is it, you install the app on a child's phone, for example, and the child cannot use the phone, they can't use Facebook or games or anything like that until they've answered a set of questions. So as you can imagine, it could be any type of curricula, anything from math to grammar to anything that they might be struggling with. And then once they answer questions correctly, they actually earn time. So they earn time to actually play, to do, you know, things that they, they want to do. And so Edgeulock has been in a couple of schools in the valley, and they've had such great results that the schools are begging them to stay in the schools, to not pull out after the, after the beta program. The second one I wanted to highlight is Easykeeper Herd Manager. The second one I wanted to highlight is Easy Keeper Herd Manager. And what they do is they're, Jean Harrison is the CEO, and she does a software-as-a-service for herd management, for animal husbandry. So as you can imagine, you see people at, you know, 4-H camps and 4-H shows and things like that, and they have everything recorded on pieces of paper. So what she does is she uses technology to organize all of that and to then improve the lineage of a certain animal, a certain herd, and the milk production, for example, of that herd, or the meat production of that herd, based on real data. So these teams are doing, solving really huge problems, and we are super excited about that, that we were actually able to take our first class from teams in Reno, from startups in Reno. And so I just want to share with you guys that we are continuing in the fall. We're in a fundraising state right now, but we're continuing in the fall with 10 more teams. And yeah, if you know of any women or children that are girls, that are interested in entrepreneurship or interested in having ideas that they can take to market, please, please spread the word about Girl Made. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Johnny Pullman. I'm here representing your Charter Committee, and to, and you've asked us to come and kind of give you a preliminary presentation on what mischief we are up to. So we would like to thank you for allowing us to speak with you today. We've had five meetings thus far, and I would like to say that the staff, Megan Salsito and Assistant City Manager Matievich, have been really exemplary. They've been more than responsive and very helpful, and we really appreciate their assistance, without which we could do very little, I might add. The only official action we've taken thus far in creating our recommendations to bring to you in late May or early June, because we understand that's the deadline that you need to decide if you want to put forth a BDR, is to require the city manager to be a Nevada resident. We talked about residency issues in relation to staff, but in particular, the appointed staff, and there was quite a bit of interest in requiring the city manager to be a resident, as they do in other city charters. But we determined that, or decided that that is something that the council could do on its own through a contract, but we did feel it was important to have the city manager be a Nevada resident. And then we have had many discussions on various topics. To move through the many topics that folks have expressed interest in, we're doing a little every week, and we don't just do one topic until it's finished, because as you well know, city government's pretty complicated, and it takes a while to digest all this. So things that we have discussed with possible action for future recommendations for you are the form and structure of government, particularly the checks and balances related to the council, manager, and mayor, the strengthening of the mayoral position, and the appointment, the potential appointment of the city attorney and/or the city clerk. And then we also wanted to ask you to consider, are there things in the charter that you have not brought forth that you think if we delineated them or recommended delineating them so that the legislature could adopt the changes, would allow you to be more efficient? Maybe things are a little fuzzy. For example, do you feel like there need to be changes in the charter that specify that you or the manager can delegate certain things so that perhaps your agenda doesn't need to be as crowded? That was a concern of several folks on the Charter Committee. During, in elections, we have discussed ward-only voting. As you know, that's been a contentious issue for the city over the years. There have been two advisory elections, and so I do believe a majority of the committee would like to have, recommend ward-only voting, but there have been two advisory elections. I mean, how do you balance that? I mean, the voters have spoken, but one of the things that we have potentially discussed is realigning the wards. Maybe there should only be one at-large position, and that that should be the mayor. So that has been a discussion that we have had. Again, we have not come to any conclusions on any of these. As far as debts and finances, we have discussed the potential limitation on the amount and form of debt that are allowed as an additional restriction over and above what state law currently sets out. But it is, we're asking to meet with the Financial Advisory Board to see what they have to say, because they do this regularly. They have a lot more knowledge in this area than this committee that meets every two years. Areas that we have discussed and received information on all of these topics thus far, and we have on our future agenda, potential changes to the civil service, annexations, and any barriers that our charter might provide or give to consolidation and functional consolidation. Are there any things in the charter that would prevent us from doing something that would be in the best interest of the city? So again, we recognize we're on a tight time schedule. We are meeting once a week. We are meeting anywhere from three to four hours every meeting, plus we have homework. So we have had a couple of members resign and ask to be replaced because they did not realize the amount of work we were going to make them do. So we are taking our jobs very seriously. We wanted you to know that, and we are looking forward to meeting with you officially as a body a little further down the way, and we would be happy to do that at your convenience. That's the end of my remarks, unless you have any questions.
Taken off, or did they drop off?
They have, and they've, and there've been...
Who replaced them?
Whoever their appointing body was.
Whoever the individual was? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes? Whoever made that appointment? Yeah. Okay. I know we're bounced.
Who dropped off? I'm sorry.
Cadence, would you come up and tell us who dropped off?
Yeah, my question was just who dropped off.
And who made the appointment?
Good afternoon. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. Originally appointed by the Senate Republican delegation was Mr. Michael Pagnier, because he had recently changed residencies and now lives 160 feet outside the city limits. He's no longer eligible, and so he resigned and was replaced by his appointing authority by Mr. Josh Hicks. Subsequent to that, Ms. Ruth Gah, who is Councilmember Delgado's appointee, just recently noted her resignation, and then, I believe, last week, we received notice that Mr. John Metzger, who is Councilwoman Shebe's appointment to the committee, is also unable to serve. And so the charter does specify that each member of the city council makes an appointment. It does not require that the other members of the body ratify that appointment, and so staff has reached out to Councilmember Delgado and Councilwoman Shebe to request that they forward those new names to us at their earliest opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Since we've jumped around here, I'm going to jump over here to item H2, Resolution Establishing Regional Medical Services Oversight Program.
Resolution 7951, Resolution Directing the Washoe County Health District to Establish and Maintain a Regional Emergency Medical Services Oversight Program to Provide for Oversight of All Emergency Medical Services Provided by the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, the County of Washoe, and the Regional Emergency Medical Services Authority, and Providing Other Matters Properly Relating There Too.
Second.
Motion. Wait a minute, I have a couple of people before we go to motion. David Ward.
Honorable Mayor, council members, city manager, it's good to see you all, and it's good to stand up here and be able to say I am not a candidate for anything, just for that clarification.
Still got till Friday.
No, it's not going to happen, not for me. But thanks to the people that are stepping up, and thanks to all of you for your service. I appreciate it. I wanted to just talk about regional health care, emergency services. I have seen over the years duplication of services, redundant services, and I think there are a lot of opportunities for creating efficiencies, both in terms of eliminating duplications essentially, and redundancies, whether it's in noticing to various organizations when those emergencies come about. We don't need redundant out-call services. I want to say that I'm a big fan of the new REMSA program that started a year and a half ago, where they got a federal grant and started providing some really radical changes to the way emergency services are provided. I think those are very beneficial, and I commend them for it. I would like, and I commend the council for looking at regional medical emergency services oversight as a whole, because I think there are a lot of opportunities to improve our services by working together. One concern I have, and that is, I've been led to believe that a very long-term contract is being considered for REMSA, and while I am a fan of REMSA and would like to see REMSA continue in their current status, I think a long-term contract could possibly be a hindrance to getting some of the efficiencies to which I referred done. So I would encourage the council to continue to look at regional services and efficiencies therein, but to avoid any kind of long-term contract with REMSA or any other agency providing those services. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judith Snell in opposition does not wish to speak. Mike Pilcher? You have plus time done. Do you both want to get up and speak now?
Well, good morning, members of the council, or good afternoon, and Mr. Mayor. We have some concerns, we have some questions, but we don't really have a comment at the moment, a public comment. We'd like to reserve that maybe towards the end of this. Maybe some of our questions will be answered through public discussion, if that's okay with you.
You marked H2A, and we could...
We did. We're here as the employees, as your employees who are on the scene, providing the treatment, part of the treatment and transport for pre-hospital care. We have some concerns. I think some, we have mostly questions, and I think some of those may be answered. If they're not, would it be okay to come back up? I hate to waste time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We won't do it now, we'll do it later.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Eddie Lorton.
Hi. For the record, Eddie Lorton. I ended up, too, I just really think we could slow down a little bit on these long-term agreements. Okay, I ended up, there's things to be thought of and spoken about, and that's the thing, too. When it comes to it, REMSA doesn't pay a franchise fee, and everyone else does, like Waste Management, stuff like that. So I think that needs to be looked at, as well as have we ever thought about having ambulances on-site with the fire department? Why don't we compete with these people for the money, and we get the revenue if we're the first ones to transport? Because every time you see, the fire station gets there first. The part of the problem, 95% of their calls are medical, 5% are for fires, okay? So we send a hook-and-ladder truck, REMSA gets free labor on the city, and we're rolling big hook-and-ladder trucks because someone tripped on something. And then REMSA gets to transport, they make the money, and we don't. So therefore, I propose maybe a couple of things. Why don't we allow maybe another ambulance company to go in competition with them, and then the fire department doesn't respond to medical? Or if someone's in a car crash, you need to be peeled out, otherwise they go in, but otherwise not. Or we can end up putting ambulances because we have emergency service technicians at the fire stations, and then we do the brownouts when they're up at Somerset or up at the top of Skyline, when there's someone that calls in sick and we need a four-man crew, then we could still man that, give medical service, and have an ambulance team of two instead of sending the other three to other fire stations. It'd be way more efficient, and then we could compete for the dollar then, and if we're always there first, like usual, then we can transport and make the money for the city. So for us to keep sending trucks and trucks, and it's on us, and be free labor to REMSA, that doesn't make sense to me. So this should be looked at. We should slow down on these long-term agreements, quit wasting money, and figure out a way where we can make money, or let another ambulance company go in service and we don't respond for medical. So I wish you'd really kick these things around instead of us rushing into these long-term agreements that's not doing anything for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam DeNey.
Sam DeNey, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government and the father of Reno's next mayor, D-E-H-N-E, if there is an honest vote count. I'm a longtime Silver Saber, whatever it's called, REMSA deal. Fortunately, I've never had to use it, but I think I've had this card for 20 years, back before it was even called REMSA. Anyway, and I agree with Mr. Ward there, absolutely. The only thing is, I don't think that we're at that point of the, of that, of the situation on this agenda item, because what the agenda item says is to establish a regional medical services oversight program. Now, once that oversight program is established, assuming you do that, then all of these questions and concerns should be addressed to them. The question before you guys right now is whether or not you want to or should establish an operation that will listen to folks like that, that guy over there and Mr. Ward, the other guy, too, whatever his name was, I forgot already. I've only seen it about 5,000 times in the newspaper, but it still slipped out of my mind. At any rate, you see, you get my point. You're looking askance. Am I wrong? Or do you understand what I'm saying? Maybe you didn't read it right either. It says to, as a matter of fact, a little bit of that second guy was a little bit off of the mark of what the agenda is talking about. This is to establish, whether or not to establish an oversight board. She's nodding her head? Nobody else has, has anybody read it? And nobody's even agreeing or disagreeing. People on TV land, people in the audience who did not read this, all we're talking about is whether or not, I'm not trying to be contentious, I'm just saying, let's keep this thing on the agenda item. The agenda item is to, whether or not to establish this oversight board. And then, all of these other questions of whether or not we should have, and I agree that we should not have a long-term contract, but all of these questions should be brought before that new board. And I'll even volunteer to be on the board. What are the chances of that? And what are the chances of Sam DeNey, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, being appointed to an important board in this community? Never happens.
I have no other public comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
My motion still stands, and for clarity, and maybe this has been actually in the works, that we're not rushing into anything. This has been in the works for almost two years, certainly for 18 months. It has involved all three of the municipalities, very intensely involved, especially in about the last year. In terms of the length of the contract, that's in comparison to an evergreen contract that never expired previously. And if there's any further clarity that you think you could add, Robert, to some of the questions?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. For the record, Councilmember Zodre, you're absolutely correct. This is actually also just the resolution to the February 10 concurrent meeting that took place with the City of Sparks, Washoe County, District Board of Health, and the City of Reno to move forward on the principles of agreement, and this is to, this just happened to not get approved at the same time, the resolution to create the oversight board.
Mr. Mayor?
Another comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, item on the Resolution 8, Sub E, says that, it's a long sentence, it's actually a, yeah, "boundaries of automatic," and I'm reading after the parentheses, or the semicolon, "is boundaries of automatic and mutual emergency medical services aid based on agreement between agencies." Does this bind us in any way? Because we are not, as I understand right now, a party to any automatic aid agreements. We just, about a month ago, did a mutual aid agreement, but I want to know if this binds us to move forward into a negotiation with any other agencies on an automatic aid agreement?
I don't believe it does. I mean, I would look to the attorneys, but I don't believe this binds us to any automatic... I mean, I would look to the attorneys, but I don't believe this binds us to any automatic aid agreement. We do have mutual aid agreements in place. But you're correct, we do not have an automatic aid agreement with Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District.
So we don't feel that we're bound to go forward now as an implementing measure and negotiate one? Is that, that's correct?
No.
Okay, well, with the minutes noting that, that's acceptable to me. Another question is on the principles, or excuse me, the spreadsheet that was provided. And all this, I do acknowledge and understand that all of this was before us at that February 10 meeting, but I'm just wondering if we go ahead and adopt this today, is there any follow-up that you see this body taking pursuant to this adoption? I know we're setting up this administrative apparatus, but, you know, as the policy body, want to know what our policy role will be. And I see in Recommendations 37 and 38 that the Reno Fire Department, IAFF, and Volunteer Service should work out any issues that assure the closest qualified unit will be sent to medical emergency. I just want to know how you see this being involved, because I think that's a policy service response that this body would be involved in, you know, discussions. So I'm talking about item 37, it's on page 12.
Yeah, Robert Chisel again, for the record. Well, one, the principles of agreement are just the principles of agreement. The actual agreement that is arrived at with the legal counsel will come back to this board for final approval. So, you know, what we have here is just principles of agreement, and a lot of what was in this Tri-Data report was when Truckee Meadows and Reno Fire were a merged entity, and so the volunteer fire service was more of an issue than it is now.
But also likewise, number 38, it clearly says, "The Fire Department should not suspend responding to EMS calls, even during high fire volume responses." And I thought we were thinking of maybe doing some other protocols, and the recommendation is to be determined by the policy of the city council.
That is correct, and that gives us the right. As currently, the fire chief, and I don't want to misquote him, but he has said publicly in front of this body before, that his intent is to allow the Reno Fire Department to have the ability to suspend going on calls. And his example was, for instance, a call-in fire where a lot of the resources are in the, used in the call-in fire and would not be available to assist REMSA or provide maybe some of the lower-level medical calls.
And I understand that. I just think it's coming on this body, on these very kind of high-level operational issues, for us to have a constant dialogue with our chief on, you know, where the policy calls for us are on service components. And we've got a, you know, a third party here saying, these are, you know, implementing steps and they involve policy matters. So I guess I would ask that maybe we amend this motion, that the chief bring back a report within a quarter's time, quarter-year time, to explain what are the implementing steps on this, and choices of policy guidance that is asked of the council.
Robert Chisel again, the principles of agreement will come back as a full agreement to this full council before the end of this fiscal year, is the plan, so.
Okay, so that's, policy options to look and see, you know, hey, based upon where we're here today, these are the policies, these are the new protocols we're thinking of doing, these are the new agreements we may need? Is that, is that how you're seeing this?
That is correct.
Play out? I'm just trying to figure out what the next steps are. What is the meaning of this?
Yes, and Mr. Dick, you want to?
Yes, for the record, Kevin Dick, District Health Officer of the Washoe County Health District. And the resolution here today on the regional EMS oversight will result in the development of an inter-local agreement that will come before this body for establishing regional EMS oversight through the Health District. We will be working with the different EMS provider agencies in the region and providing recommendations for protocols, for response, those types of things. But we will not be directing your fire department in those matters. Those recommendations then would be for consideration of the city council in making those policy decisions on how you want any changes to occur.
Okay, well, I guess that sounds like a good process. I mean, I don't want to see an inter-local agreement, how dispatch and garlock's going to occur. I don't, you know, it's not my, you know, it's not our purview. I'm curious about if we're going to have changes in some of our ways that, you know, it's not bundled into an inter-local, that then it's a done deal, and everyone else has already adopted it. That's where I'm looking.
Right, it won't be bundled into the inter-local. The inter-local will set up the process that we use and the structure that we use for looking at the different EMS responders and figuring out what are the best procedures to get the efficiencies that Mr. Ward was mentioning earlier, so that we have a cohesive system that's operating as a system and not as different entities going off on a response, but a coordinated system of those different entities.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Pilcher, have you been in the room with the stakeholders to express your concern?
For the record, Mike Pilcher. No, ma'am, we have not been, not had a seat at that table.
Okay, because I think that that would be incredibly important. Andrew, you're the one sort of leading the charge on this. Is it some way that we can get them at the table? Because I think these guys are boots on the ground, and I think it's going to be imperative. The other thing is, I am worried about this long-term contract. That it definitely concerns me, because it ties a lot of hands.
That was one of the questions we had, ma'am, was, under the principles for franchise agreement, does the 16-year contract with the automatic six-year renewals that could potentially go through the year 2042, well past some of your terms, is that specifically exclusive to private providers of transport or public and private providers of transport? If it's exclusive to private, that would still give you the option, ma'am, or interview sitting at this table to someday say, look, on a sunnier day when the economy recovers, or if we host the Olympics, or if we get another safer-type grant where we can buy six ambulances, you folks can, for $1 to $2 million, put them in half a dozen stations, and complete that chain in the pre-hospital care. We have the guys that do the treatment. We arrive 5 minutes and 36 seconds faster, on average, to the patient. We would like the ability someday, if you would approve that, to continue, have that continuity with the patient. So not only do we treat, but we also transport. We think that the fire-based ALS and transport system nationally is the gold standard, is by far and away the greatest number, percent standard. The utility models like REMSA are few and far between, and do a great job. I want to make that crystal clear. I'm not here in any way, shape, or form to downplay their importance in this community.
Mr. Chisel, what is the amount of the franchise fee to be paid to the city?
Robert Chisel, in this principles agreement, there is going to be no franchise fees charged to REMSA.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to follow up on Councilwoman Shivi's question about, you know, sitting down and meeting, and we certainly can do that. I guess what I would say to the council is, the principles of agreement were approved, so this council, if they wanted to go in a different direction, you know, this council would have to change the action that was taken at the joint meeting that we had with the other jurisdictions. But we can certainly sit down, you know, with the bargaining groups and walk through the principles of agreement and maybe try and educate them on what's in there, if that's the request. But I just want to make sure, if the request is to come back and make some changes, that's a much, much different request than what we've done so far. So I just want to clarify sort of what we're, what the outcome is that we're looking for from sitting down. If it's just to educate, we certainly can do that. If it's to go in a different direction, then that would have to come back probably to a joint meeting to, for that, in order for that to happen.
I'm just concerned, looking at this, there's a lot of concerns in here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, and on that note, I think Sharon brought it up earlier. The current contract is basically in perpetuity. I mean, unless, unless they don't perform, their current contract goes continuous. I mean, it's, it continues on forever, and we have to have them at the table to negotiate because their contract is in perpetuity. So to say that we're going from in perpetuity to a 16-year contract, which is what we're doing with their permission, is a big step forward. And if we want to talk about our fire department handling transport, as everyone at this table knows, the biggest challenge this city faces moving forward is our unsustainable labor contracts. And if we try to bring transport into the city, the cost to the citizens of this community is going to be tremendous.
Okay, I hear you.
I mean, so, so I think when we start looking at those types of issues, and the cost of buying equipment, I don't, I don't see us moving in that direction. I mean, I don't think it's sustainable.
Well...
As you've heard me say many times, I think we've got to look at privatizing more things within the city, not bringing more things into our labor contracts.
So do you think that this comes down to just privatization? Is that what you think?
It is private right now.
I got it, but when you look at these long-term contracts, I mean, we have, when you look at our other contracts that we've gotten into, this ties our hands, so if something else takes place, that we can't do anything about it.
But we can't, we can't shrink it down to 16 years without their permission.
Okay, I got you there. However, but there are some things in here that with special events, I have some concerns. How are we going to address that?
For the record, Mike Pilcher. Ma'am, I'm not sure. I know Lucy Flores' AB 286 requires certain levels of emergency service delivery, whether it's at the basic, the intermediate, the paramedic level, I think is yet to be determined. But there is some population kickers in that. We would like to be active participants in that. I wanted to say something with respect to Councilman Dorch, and I appreciate your comments, but if you spend $1 to $2 million on ambulances, you recover that in the first year, maybe the second year because you'd have some startup costs, costs with equipment and such not, and maybe some training. But most of the fire departments across the country do transport, and that's a way they recover revenue. And we've always felt like we could help more with the financial situation. We believe that would be a tremendous step in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Councilmembers Dorch and Zadra, that the evergreen is an issue, and it's being a baby step forward. I also believe that the fire department was, you know, was a paramilitary organization with a chain of command. The chief was involved in this and presented what he felt was best for the fire department, and that's where I think the word has to come. I am not ready to go where Councilmember Dorch goes on the privatization, or that there is not in the future of the department, you know, transport. And so I do want clarity, because I couldn't find in my notes, but I thought I asked it at the joint. Does this preclude us from going down the route of somehow reworking, retooling, and going to transport in some way? Because as a matter of fact, I read that the City of Las Vegas just took steps in the last month going that way. So are we precluded from going in that direction by this agreement?
This resolution doesn't have anything to do with the REMSA franchise agreement. There is an existing REMSA franchise agreement, and that agreement provides exclusivity to REMSA for transport. And so that's the current state of affairs, and that's, that's the situation we're in.
Health Officer Dick, is that, is that written tailored narrowly so that it's private? They have private, whereas the public can do what they're going to do, okay?
No, it's, no, it's not.
So we could not man up our forces to do transport, our paramedics to use their services?
That would be in violation of the current franchise agreement.
And this amendment here is silent on that and just lets that fall through, follow through? Or not this, but what work has been done to date?
There are two separate things that the EMS Working Group has been working on. One is regional EMS oversight, and that's the resolution today. The other is renegotiating the REMSA franchise agreement. And that was addressed at the February 10 concurrent meeting, and the District Attorney's Office will be working on drafting that franchise agreement based on the principles of agreement from that meeting. And then that will be considered as the renegotiated franchise agreement moving forward.
Okay, so if this body wanted to, you know, rethink that, or give our manager direction to, that's somewhere we want to just hold open in this next 16 years, we should do some work on our side before we get back to a next concurrent meeting? Is that, would that be a process for us?
I think that that would be a process if that's what the body wanted to do. But I would remind everyone that there, this has been the culmination of quite a bit of work to get to this point, and work that is necessary to bring the two cities, the county, the Health District, and REMSA all together in a mutually agreed-upon result. And so I think it would be troubling and would throw us in jeopardy as to what we might then result with as far as our opportunities for a renegotiated franchise agreement. So I'd ask you to consider that.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, I think at the end of the day, if we went back to REMSA and said, that's what we're going to add to this contract, they would say that we're not negotiating anymore, we're going to stick with the contract we got.
They can, yes, they can always, they can always do that.
Yes.
Until we sign off, yes, they can.
Well, that factual distinction between the public and the private is one that, a perception that I did not have, and I don't know where I picked that up, maybe I picked it up incorrectly, but it is one, you know, that this body knows, and individually, we can bring that forward to the collective body if we want to in the interim period.
And Mr. Dick, have any of the other three bodies, that being Sparks, the county, or the Health Board, had issue with what's in front of us today? Because our discussion has gone way beyond what's actually in front of us.
Everybody has been in agreement with this is our path forward for the regional EMS oversight.
I guess mine is just a procedural question.
Sure, Mike.
It's on, okay. My question is, by the adoption of this oversight program, do we have a timeline of how long we think that this oversight committee will take to bring stuff back to us?
To, for us to actually implement this moving forward. Our desire is to have the inter-local agreement ready for action at a May 5 concurrent meeting. We have been working, it's budget season, I think, everywhere, and so we've been working and at, with Washoe County on our budget proposal for next year, and we're including costs for staffing and implementation of the regional EMS oversight in our FY 14-15 budget. So if we, then, next fiscal year would begin the additional staffing for that, the creation of the advisory committee, and be moving forward from there.
Thank you.
In your motion, do we have a second for that motion? Had a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote.
Can we read the motion, please?
It's a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah. All right.
Sounded like you were going a different direction.
The vote is 5-2. Ms. Brackus, how did you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dorch?
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
5-2. All right, let's go to J 5, the catalyst fund for garlock printing.
For the record, Maureen McKissick with the City Manager's Office, thank you for moving this item up. Items J 5-1 and J 5-2 are companion items. They both relate to the conveyance of State of Nevada catalyst funds through the City of Reno to garlock printing, and your staff report contains the details pursuant to that. This item first appeared, or both these items first appeared on the previous council agenda, were continued to this one in the wake of a lawsuit filed by the Nevada Policy Research Institute, which challenged the constitutionality of the catalyst fund itself. In the intervening two weeks, staff from the City of Reno has met with colleagues at the Governor's Office of Economic Development in Edom to review those agreements. We feel they are at a point now where they can be considered for your approval. We are recommending at this point that you approve them, and we have staff with us from those other agencies to answer your questions. from those other agencies to answer your questions. We have Steve Hill, the Executive Director of the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Brad Mammer, who's the Director of Business Development for GOED, Mike Kizmiarski of EDON, and John Shipman of the City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Question.
Uh, so, uh, Ms. McKissick, are the documents that you've provided us today for execution by the mayor any different than what was pulled from the agenda previously?
Yes, there has been one important modification. I'll have John Shipman describe that to you.
I'd like to, if you'd call that out in the agreement, Mr. Shipman, that'd be great.
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, if you look at item J five dot two A.
Okay, just, just a second. J?
So, this is the agreement between the city and GOED.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
Wait, wait. That's J five-point-one, or J five?
J five-point-two A.
Oh, two, okay.
Is what I have.
Are we taking both of these at the same, okay.
And then, if you were to go to page six...
Page six, okay.
Which is the, right above the signatory, the, the signature box, we have inserted the paragraph, "If a court of competent jurisdiction invalidates this agreement or any portion thereof for any reason, GOED agrees to waive all claims and recourse against the sponsoring municipality arising from, growing out of, or in any way connected with or incident to this agreement. GOED's sole remedy against the sponsoring municipality shall be to terminate this agreement. In the event of termination, the sponsoring municipality shall refund to GOED any undispersed catalyst funds proceeds in its possession, but shall have no further obligation to GOED under this agreement in law, in equity, or otherwise. The provision will survive the termination of this agreement for any reason."
That sounds like a little bit of an indemnification clause. So, is the State of Nevada waiving their immunities here? Is that what's going on?
No, no, it's not indemnity at all. It's rather, it's, it's a limited liability clause. So, to the extent that, um, as this talks about, if, if this provision is at some point deemed unconstitutional, the only remedy that the state would have to the city would be to terminate the agreement at that point in time. So, the concern was, and what wasn't addressed, was between the time that the item came on the agenda, and when the council was going to hear it, the lawsuit was filed, it didn't deal with the scenario of the city reimbursing the company, and then having, uh, the law deemed unconstitutional, and then potentially having the, the state coming after the city for that money. So, this, this deals with that, and it makes it clear that, that, the, the sole remedy that the state has is to terminate the agreement. And then we have similar language already in the agreement that we have with Garlock. We will be coming back with an amendment for Lincoln Cutting.
You will be, okay.
Well, not for Lincoln Cutting, but for the GOED agreement that we have for Lincoln Cutting, essentially mirroring this language that I just read you in subsection five. But we're already protected in the Garlock agreement under section seven A, so...
Yeah, one of my, uh, one of my several concerns about this is that we get tangled into a lawsuit, and we're spending resources that we don't really have defending, doing depositions, that sort of thing, and spinning, you know, our wheels. Is there any way, did you have any discussions with GOED about maybe providing us some resources to, you know, whatever legal expenses we incur if we get dragged into this?
Uh, well, we haven't, again, we haven't been dragged into it at this point in time. Um, you know, it, certainly that litigation could impact us, um, but didn't have those specific discussions with them because, you know, quite frankly, we're not a party to that litigation at this point in time.
How much else of this money has gone out the door?
None, I mean, that's...
To other municipalities? We're the first ones out, huh?
No, no, there's, and, and, um, GOED can speak to this, Brad can speak to this, but, uh, you know, the, I mean, there's ten million dollars, I believe, and, uh, you know, that we're talking about here between the two agreements, something in the neighborhood of about six hundred thousand dollars. None of it has gone out the door. Before it can even go out the door, the jobs have got to be created. It's a reimbursement agreement, so, uh, it all has to be certified, so, um, you know, the company needs to perform, we need to certify it, we need to prove to GOED that in fact, uh, they met their commitment before the funds flowed.
That's right. We have to do the certification, and that's what my problem was before. Before I knew that the state constitution, this was the workaround, the state constitution prohibit, prohibition, I was concerned that we're not getting ad, any admin money out of GOED. Does GOED have a, um, no, I guess that's, you said it's ten million for the catalyst funds? Does GOED have any administrative money that they can discretionary from the executive branch give to us, city, to say, "Hey, you know, you're doing a lot of work"?
I haven't had that conversation, but again, we do have GOED representatives here.
Uh-huh, how about it?
How many employees are they bringing?
Yeah. Um, I mean, I'm trying to remember, I'd have to look at...
Never mind, we'll find out later.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that, right.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Steve Hill, I'm the Director of the Governor's Office of Economic Development. Mayor, Councilwoman, um, just a couple of quick, uh, comments on your question. Uh, one is, no, we don't have that kind of funding, um, and I guess the second point I would make is that the city of Reno actually applied to us for this funding. We are entering into a contract, uh, in response to that application, so, um, we're not sure that request would necessarily be warranted.
I saw that, and I saw that an Assistant City Manager applied for this application rather than the body as a whole, and I'm, I'm wondering about the process. There's a signature on the application that, uh, you know, it didn't come, did it come before us to make the decision to apply to GOED, or was that done administratively? Okay, well, you don't have any money to help us out with this certification, and is it, is it along the lines of like doing Davis Bacon checks and that sort of thing? You know, rather involved, looking at payrolls and everything, and, and time cards?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilwoman, um, actually, I think that's probably a question that is best directed to your staff. I, I would say that, um, the, um, the information that will be necessary in order to determine that the company has actually, uh, taken the steps necessary to receive the grant should really not be onerous. Thank you.
And I think that the, having our staff, uh, we've told our staff we want to get new business into town, we want to create more jobs into town, and when this came up, I think they took the initiative to apply for it.
I'm going to respond to your questions one by one. Maureen McKissick, for the record, Garlock will be creating up to two hundred jobs, and that's listed in your staff report. It's phased in different stages, and you can see how those relate to the reimbursements. The reimbursements will be done after certification, which is going to be primarily determined through payroll, so that will be the primary instrument that we use, and it will be the city staff who does that certification, and we are not receiving any kind of compensation for it. So, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would add, um, later in the agenda, I'll give a report on the trip that, um, was made to Washington DC last week by five counties, three cities, and several agencies, including the university and DRI. And two of us had a meeting, um, with the Department of Commerce, and in particular, Economic Development, and we made reference to what we're doing with the catalyst fund, to the Executive Director, um, and we are this close finally to be getting our SEDs. We've put our application in, and, and those will be significant, and we made reference to, um, the catalyst fund, as well as us finally now, for the first time utilizing HUD, um, for economic development, and she said that that will be tremendous benefits in our future applications for the SEDs. She was very excited about this activity. Money from Washington DC to come needs to see that we've got this kind of activity here at the state level and local level as well.
Mr. Denae, you wish to speak?
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and I don't want to potentially sound like a curmudgeon, you know how I hate doing that, but the, um, open meeting law demands that agenda items be understood by the regular old person sitting around, and if I'd read this off of the bat, I wouldn't have known what you were talking about, but if you're a little, little deeper, um, and I'm, by the way, I'm in, totally in favor of jobs for the community, totally, as much as anybody there is. But what we have here is, um, some money, well, this isn't the money she was talking about, that's free money from Washington. I don't know where this money came from. Free money, of course, that's taxes, but it's free money if it gets to Reno. At any rate, um, you're gonna, these folks apparently are going to bring two hundred jobs to Reno, and I heard, here it says six hundred thousand dollars on the agenda, and then I heard somebody say ten million dollars. Now, apparently, this money is going to be given to this, and I'm not speaking necessarily for or against it, but this money is apparently going to be given to this Garlock Printing Company to come to Reno and potentially theoretically, maybe, we hope, possibly, create or bring. There's a difference between creating and bringing the jobs, and I'm not speaking against EDON, but I've heard them talking about bringing jobs, and then you find out when the company gets here, they're going to be trying to create jobs. I guess my main point here, and I've always said this from Cabelas to Star Bonds and everything in between, it's great to bring these companies here, but when you're given these corporate welfare breaks, what you're doing is you're really stomping on, you're really stomping on the businesses that are already here doing pretty much the same thing. We've got lots of printing companies, or companies that would be capable of doing this, and they've been doing it pretty much on their own all of these years. So, I have to say, I don't think it's fair to the level playing field, which I love level playing fields, for everything from taxing to giving attention to the various people running for mayor. I like an even playing field. I despise these uphill grinds, and this would not be fair to the, and you'll, you'll never find out how many pop moms and pop printing companies will go out of businesses, or just have a real hardship on themselves if this money, because it does say right here, there's the key word, for reimbursement up here in that paragraph, reimbursement, and then down here further on, it says for relocation of this company to Reno. So, I guess, actually, I'm, I am, if they want to move here on their own, I'm all for it, but I don't think we ought to be giving our tax dollars to somebody to come to Reno, and the mayor is looking right at me, he knows exactly what I'm saying, I'm not putting words in his brain, he's shaking his head now, he doesn't know exactly what he's saying. He knows what I'm saying, but maybe he doesn't like it. I just don't like paying money for other companies to come here and compete against companies that we already have here.
Thank you very much. Having no other comments, I close the public comment, bring it back to the table.
Move to approve?
Have a motion, have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Um, I've thought very hard about this over the last couple of weeks, and, um, I've done my research on Garlock, I think they'd absolutely be an enhancement to our economic, um, climate here, and I, I, I thank them for looking at us and considering us, but, uh, you know, our state constitution has a prohibition against, uh, gifting. This is a very common, uh, thing that was put in, actually, in the nineteenth century, when the railroads came across the west, cities were doling out money left and right, and buying railroad tracks through their communities, and a lot of states had, whoa! And I think sometimes these nineteenth-century concepts, uh, you know, they reverberate today, and I think they're true, and I, I'm concerned. I know Texas can do what they can do, and we're at a disadvantage, and maybe we need a federal response on federal code, but I, I have concern, I don't think we should be doing this. I think we need an economic policy that, that looks a little different. I, I know this is the state's economic policy, um, who's to say that state money couldn't be better used to, you know, an infrastructure bank for someone like, you know, a city like us to provide infrastructure for these, um, you know, that we have to serve this industry, or if it wants to stay in bait, state budget, mental health counselors? Now, let me continue, Mayor, um, if I may, because I don't think this dialogue has really gone on about what this is, and I know it's, it's out there in lawsuits, but I, um, I do have concerns that, and, and this came up during baseball, and, um, this is, this becomes a very zero-sum game, and I, I see a disadvantage in, uh, supporting outside industry, whereas we're not supporting, supporting our own in, in some ways. So, I'm, I'm not going to be voting for this.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose?
No.
Show the vote, six-one.
What's that, sir? You mean the J five-two?
Yes.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose?
No.
Show the vote, six-one.
Now, we'll do item J one, uh, leased with the First T of Northern Nevada.
Good afternoon, for the record, Andy Bass, Recreation Manager. On January fifteenth, uh, Mr. James Keegan of Golf Convergys presented his market analysis of Rosewood Lakes Golf Course to the City Council. After that presentation, the city received a letter of interest from the First T of Northern Nevada. They expressed interest and desire to enter into an agreement to operate Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. Uh, the First T of Northern Nevada is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to develop youth through the game of golf. According to NRS two-six-eight dot zero-five-three, the city may enter into an agreement with a nonprofit organization that provides services that the city would otherwise be required to expend money to provide. Today, we're seeking City Council's approval to negotiate an agreement for the operations of Rosewood Lakes Golf Course with the First T of Northern Nevada. If approved, we'll return back to City Council for a final review and approval. Um, there are representatives here from the First T that can answer any questions you have regarding their operations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I had an opportunity to meet with the representatives from First T, and I thought, uh, they're a product for what, uh, they want to provide for the city, working with youth, working with seniors. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity for us to, to move forward with. Uh, I think it's a win-win, uh, opportunity currently for the, the community out there, um, keeping the golf course working, keeping it moving, uh, keeping open space, and especially with, uh, again, with the services that they want to provide in conjunction with we as a city, as a public need to provide, uh, is, is a good fit for us to move forward. So, I, I hope we can move forward with this.
Okay, but before we go to a motion, I have several people who wish to speak. Judith Snell, uh, does not wish to speak. She says, "Keep eighteen holes settled for nine." Richard Unsee, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Rick Odinsky. I'm a resident of, uh, Rosewood Lakes, and my house backs up against, um, the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. And, um, I'm here, I do not, uh, obviously have any information on the details of the contract, uh, since it hasn't been negotiated, so I can't give you any input one way or the other, but in my former occupation as the internal auditor for the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, I did two golf-related audits, and in addition, when the RSCVA, the city of Reno, and Washto County went together with a joint study on golfing in the area, I analyzed that and took it apart to make sure that it was consistent with what was going on in this area. In my audits, what I discovered is that municipal golf courses, as a rule, don't make money. They're offered as a service to the community. The exception to that was Wild Creek, um, and, well, the RSCVA operated two, Wild Creek and North Gate. The difference between the two was North Gate was buried in debt, very much similar to what we now have with, uh, Rosewood Lakes. Um, it was fortuitous for the RSCVA to be able to close that out and continue operating what it has. The second audit I did, um, was an audit of the Reno Tahoe Open, uh, conducted for our organization on the effectiveness of that organization, and how we compared to other organizations around the country. What came out of that audit, basically, was that within a community, a municipality like ours, about twelve percent of the people have a direct interest in watching golf. About half of those will play golf, um, in a, a single month. Um, so you've got about six percent of the people, if we use a number of around three hundred and fifty thousand people, that means we're going to get about twenty-one thousand rounds of golf a month, or each golf course, if there's, uh, still nine left, would get about twenty-three hundred. Uh, in talking with Mr. Forrest, that's about what we do, so we're getting our share. Uh, there's a potential to get a lot more, you can pick up that other six. What makes the difference to get that other six is the quality of the golfing experience. If the clubhouse is up to snuff, if the course is up to snuff, um, if there are competitions that involve people, and if the rates are attractive enough, you get, uh, more market share. What it boils down to is, um, if the RSCVA had had an opportunity to bring in a partner on its golfing operations, uh, it might still be maintaining two golf courses. Um, anything that'll take the sting out of operating the golf course helps. Obviously, the First T cannot step up and pick up the full eight hundred thousand dollar operating debt load, but a lot of that is due to debt and the infrastructure. Couple of recommendations I would have. Number one, um, I play golf out there when it's open, um, and I encourage you to open it, uh, two to three times a week, and, uh, I play out there for two reasons. It's convenient, and it's cheap, um, and maybe you ought to address the cheap, maybe it's too cheap, um, it might be time to raise the rates. Number two, if you want to put together a volunteer task force, um, to help with any recommendations, I stand ready to serve. Thank you.
Billings Sasser does not wish to speak. She's in favor. Support this proposal. Say likely win-win to the city and the public. Jim Whitkey? Do you wish to speak?
I did the call.
You have it. Okay. Karen Whitkey does not wish to speak. I'm sorry to thank you for losing Rosewood Lakes as a public facility. I didn't thank the person, Mr. Keegan. Did an honest survey. Eddie Lorton?
Hi, I'm Eddie Lorton. For the record, I ended up too, when the gentleman had done that we paid to do the analysis on the whole thing. I'd wondered if we ever thought about this, because we needed flood storage. And then Mr. Dortch had mentioned the fact that, you know, one time, a long time ago, we tried to sell the thing. And then later on, at that other meeting, we talked about, so I agree with Oscar too, to keep some golfing open. But what we didn't talk about that came about later, when we put it up for sale before, because there was a $1.5 million bond against the thing. So who in their right mind would buy a golf course with that big of a bond against it? So therefore, since we had $7.5 million from the RTC, you know, for the easement for it to go through there, couldn't we pay off that bond with the $1.5 million and still walk away with six and then put it up for sale? And then, so then you keep your word to the community, then we get out of the $1.5 million a year for maintenance, and we're at 1.6, we can keep the six, and somebody would buy the thing then, and we get out of the debt. So just things to consider, why we're considering things. And if we could get more input from the council on a lease, okay, to see what kind of lease we're going to have and what it's going to expose us to and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sater, did you wish to speak?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Bob Sater, resident of Washoe County. I'm on the Board of Directors of the First T of Northern Nevada, and also a member of the Duncan Golf Management Team. We have several people here today. They really don't have to speak. I don't have to speak. If you don't need any further information, we are here, however, and prepared to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I think, Mr. Sater, it would probably be good, there are a lot of people who maybe have a misunderstanding of what First T is. They just think it's golf. Could you give us the elevator quick synopsis of what First T is and does with the youth?
Yes, we can. I'd like to request that our executive director do that, if I may.
That's right.
Hi, my name's Chris Duer. I'm the executive director for the First T. And just to answer your question, the First T is an organization that actually uses the game of golf to teach young people character values. We have nine core values that we teach: honesty, respect, perseverance, judgment, sportsmanship. And really, the only way we can teach this is to have a facility. Right now, we currently are at nine different golf courses. And because we can't have enough time on the course, we actually teach golf on the driving range. Well, I don't know how many other sports get taught on a driving range, but we need access to a golf course where we can actually teach the game to the kids and incorporate all of our nine core values and our life skills. So when a child participates in our program, they walk away with life skills, such as goal-setting, and why is it important to set goals? Why is it important to give back to your community? Why is it important to graduate from high school? And how do you do that? So that's somewhat we're about.
Can you guys also touch base in terms of the proposed idea of working with the seniors, and also whether it's going to be open to the public?
Yeah, I think, actually, should I address that? I'll above address that.
Thank you.
We've got a tag team going here, Mr. Councilman. We have a vision for this facility. We believe that it can be a real game changer for the First T, to allow us to expand our programs for youth in the community to have dedicated facilities to do so. But we also, our vision is also to operate the facility as a public facility, open to the public. We think that we can change the, reposition this golf facility in the market to be a training facility, a facility, an academy for learning, facility for youth, for seniors, and for beginners. That would be the vision. In doing that, we anticipate that the lease will have to cover some of the problems or some of the issues that are going to take place with Rosewood. If the Southwest Connector goes through, Rosewood Lakes will not be an 18-hole golf course anymore. It will have to be reconstructed, and it can be what we call an executive course, which is a shorter course, which is much better for youth and seniors along the lines of what Brookside used to be before it closed. We can have a large driving range, so we can satisfy the goals of the First T. We envision a partnership with Duncan Golf Management. Duncan Golf Management, we have two representatives, Tom Duncan and Scott Wachowski, in the room. Duncan Golf Management operates five golf courses in Northern Nevada. Two of them are leases from government entities, and three are owned. All of those facilities provide golf to the community in Northern Nevada and at Lake Tahoe. We at the First T do not operate golf courses. We would probably have the same kind of deficits you did, if we tried to operate a golf course. But Duncan Golf Management has a history of acquiring golf courses that are in financial trouble and being able to run them at a profit. At the First T is not looking to make money off of this. We want facilities. We want use for our children. Duncan Golf Management is hoping to run it at a profit. We will enter into an operating agreement with that entity, so that we share the facility and it's open to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Duncan, would you mind coming up a minute? Would you, you and I've had a couple of conversations of how you would be using the kids and stuff like this to work, to help defray some of those type of expenses. Would you mind explaining?
Thank you. Tom Duncan, for the record. It's our vision to try to employ some of these kids and teach them how to operate the different parts of our business. We have a food and beverage facility. We have golf carts. We have golf course maintenance. We could teach the kids how to receive customers in the pro shop. So in addition to operating the facility, we want to incorporate the kids and give them some job skills as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes?
I just have a couple of questions. Do we anticipate how long, if this were approved today, how long this negotiation, before something would come back to the council? I'm trying to get at who's opening the course and prepping it.
It's open now. I'm there. Oh, go ahead. We know that you have an issue before you of opening the golf course, and we've read the report on how much your average losses are and how difficult a decision that is for you. We know, we have, we know what we want, and we believe we can negotiate an acceptable lease with your staff to bring back to you. Our commitment to you would be to bring that lease, assuming your staff can operate this quickly, to bring that lease back to you on April 16th, basically one month from today, more or less. And if you approve that lease at that time, that golf course will be in operation by May 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple other comments. Yes, I think the last time we talked about Rosewood Lakes and had the presentation, the fact that 736,000 a year annual operating loss for the past five years, and the options presented to us were bad and worse, certainly to the golf community as well as the homeowners surrounding that. So thank you for coming forward. I am familiar with your program. My son was in it. You have a great reputation.
Thank you.
So I look forward to the details of the lease.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few comments. I, you know, I'm glad we're thinking of a way to maintain golf within our recreational offerings to the city. I think that's very important. We've, you know, a long time ago had an ice skating rink. Don't have that. Watch Moana Pool fall apart. You know, we cannot lose. And I understand the comments about, you know, how many golf courses, how many people play, where the trends are. But I think it is a critical ingredient of a recreational quality of life offering that a city should provide. But I have a little concern about this approach, and I've just, you know, I don't know if my questions are for you, but it seems like Duncan, which is an operator, contracts directly with the jurisdictions. And here we have this organization that's a middle man, and I guess it's because we have a statute that allows us to go exclusive. I've read that statute. I'm not sure that, when you get into an agreement way, that of them providing services, that the statute contemplates that. So I question the instrument that we're thinking about going. Because we've entered into these kind of exclusive negotiations for leases, but they're really for people to have buildings and, you know, do something. But I think the negotiated terms are not contemplated by the statute. And so that's a concern for me, and I'm not asking legal to respond on this right now. I just, it raises flags to me. So I'm wondering why we wouldn't go with Duncan directly, or maybe they're not interested. And then Duncan, you know, operates with First T and so on. And I think, you know, we could do a short RFP sort of thing and get in, because we have so many relationships, public-private partnerships, and so many have gone kind of sour for us. And I think that we will be throwing money into golf, and it should be an obligation of our general fund to do that. I'm just concerned that maybe we would want to go too fast to April 16th, and also that maybe we're not choosing the best path to get there. And, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments on that?
Mayor and council, my only comment would be, I mean, it's a policy decision to council. I mean, we brought this to you as an option. If there's a different route you want to take on this, you know, if that body wants us to give us the direction, we can certainly do that. Staff is more than comfortable with the recommendation that we've brought forward. So I think it's up to the council. If you would like to go a different direction, that's certainly your discretion.
Mr. Dortch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think having these guys step up and come in and say that they want to help us out, I think, is tremendous. And, you know, to go a different route, you know, maybe the route that Mr. Lorton brought up, as far as pay off the debt and see if someone wants to buy it. I don't know who's going to come in here and want to buy that golf course, with the potential of the Southeast Connector going right through the middle of it. So I don't foresee someone else stepping in here and saying that they're going to pay for a golf course that's going to have a major route go through it.
And I think we've agreed somewhere along the line, I don't remember where it was or what it was, that we're not going to sell that for buildings or anything else.
Absolutely not.
And I think that we, I think it was a few years ago, we put this course out to bid to find somebody that would take it over and run it and do the things, and nobody showed up at the front door. Am I correct, sir? Isn't that right? Thank you.
And I think when you look at the quality of the operators, not just the First T organization, but also Duncan, that stepped up and wants to come in here and see if they can make this work, I think it's worth going down this route, negotiating with them, and see what we can come back with.
I do too. I think the sooner the better.
Then I might like to make a recommendation that we approve staff recommendation.
Yes.
Second?
Have a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Show the vote seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to jump to the consent agenda.
How we finish that?
What?
What?
Yeah, the consent agenda. I thought we said it.
That would be...
Oh, well, Mr. Deney, are you still here? You want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody want to pull any items on the consent agenda to discuss? Have a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. North Sierra Street Abandonment, item F1. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will. Your current file.
Okay. Yes, sir.
For the record, Bill Goll, City Civil Engineer. Before you today is a request for an abandonment for approximately a 26-foot wide by 800-foot long portion of right-of-way located on the east side of North Sierra Street. The subject property is bounded on the west by the back of the sidewalk for North Sierra Street and the six abutting parcels to the east. Property requested for abandonment is currently utilized primarily as landscaping or parking areas for the property owners requesting the abandonment. The right-of-way for Sierra Street was obtained by the city through a resolution of relinquishment from the Nevada Department of Transportation, and no value was exchanged for the land, that area that is requested for abandonment. Area has been reviewed by all the servicing utilities. AT&amp;T and Envy Energy have identified existing utilities within the abandoned area, and they request public use easements to continue to operate and maintain those utilities. City Public Works staff and Regional Transportation Commission staff have also reviewed the request and have no concerns for the abandonment area, as there is no proposed widening on Sierra Street at this time, and no roadbed capacity improvements identified in the, for Sierra Street in the 2035 transportation plan.
Okay.
The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have for him. Staff recommends council determination that the public will not be materially injured by the proposed vacation and approve the abandonment subject to the conditions in the staff report. And I can answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Chair, entertain the motion.
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F2, Madam Secretary. Have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, and we received 13 letters in opposition to this item, all of which were provided to council.
Okay. I will, we have people who wish to speak. I have several people that, one says they're, George Foster is in favor of it, does not wish to speak. Richard Barthollet is in favor, does not wish to speak. Roberta Ross is in favor, does not wish to speak. And Jim Galloway is in favor and does not wish to speak. Now we have some people that wish to speak. Dan Gallus wishes to speak. He's in opposition. Dan, you come forward, please.
Dan Gallus, St. Mary's Regional Medical Center. St. Mary's is not in favor of the ordinance to expand the special, the downtown special assessment district from the current special assessment district. We, we're not in favor of it. We feel it's an unnecessary expense. The, St. Mary's owns or controls 26 parcels in the special assessment district. The cost of St. Mary's is well into the six figures. We received a notice on March 4th from Stephen Hardesty, Special Assessment District Coordinator, saying that there would be a public hearing on March 26th regarding this item, and that on, a public hearing to actually levy assessments would be held on May 13th, which was then moved to May 20th. But we never received a notice about this public hearing. Three years ago, St. Mary's Regional Medical Center, under its previous owners, were losing a substantial sum of money for about three, four years. They were close to bankruptcy. The previous owners put the hospital up for sale, and there were at least two large publicly-held for-profit companies that looked at St. Mary's to take over the hospital and purchase the hospital. All of them decided that they were not going to be able to turn the hospital around financially. Prime Healthcare looked at the hospital and felt that is their mission. They turn around hospitals that are in trouble. And so on July 1, 2012, Prime Healthcare took over St. Mary's, and they proceeded to turn the hospital around financially, starting with the first month and have ever since. It's no secret that the key to the success that the hospital has had so far is that they've looked at every expenditure and judged whether that expenditure would be needed or not. The first criteria would be to prioritize patient care, and that's what we've done since Prime has owned the hospital. We do patient care, and that's what we've done since Prime has owned the hospital. We do not see this expenditure as necessary to our mission. We already have a special assessment police district, and we do pay for that. And Prime, since Prime has owned St. Mary's, we have paid our property taxes, and the city has benefited from that. But the special assessment district expansion, we are not in favor of.
Thank you very much. Fred Atchison.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Identify yourself for the record.
Fred Atchison, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I'm against it. I'm in the, in the area that's affected. When this special assessment proposal was first made by the police a number of years ago, residences were accepted from the district, and the idea being that it was mostly for a commercial benefit. I have a number of apartment rentals next to the university, and I think the approach, in fact, it came to mind, somebody said, every great here today, said, every great city has a great downtown. Reno is becoming more than, the downtown Reno area is becoming more like a regional park. If you really look at it, what has been done by this council and previous councils, you've expanded the focus of recreation into the center of Reno more than almost any other area of this valley. It's busy all the time. When, when the Lake Tahoe Connector gets all the way to Pyramid Lake, when we finally have a path leading from Tahoe to Pyramid, if we looked at the long view, this is going to really be something. I see Reno as exploding as a desirable place to live. And so I think we have to take a long view in this. I don't think we can look at taking on-the-cheap approach anymore. Years ago, there was a proposal to put a small rinky-dink ice rink in front of this very city hall, which would have ruined a good parcel of land and would have taken the short view. I was against that, because you couldn't use it as a hockey rink. You couldn't use it as other things. It was taking a short, on-the-cheap approach. That is the approach being taken by this proposal. Let's see how we can limit the amount of assessments. That's the kind of approach. The city police told me that they had two reasons for pushing this. One was to increase the exposure of the Reno police in these small commercial areas, to push poor people essentially, or undesirable people, into other areas of our same town. That's a myopic approach. Push it where? To Virginia Lake? Push it where? To Neal Road? Then have the same problem? If you want to reassess, take a more expansive approach. Assess everybody. Treat Reno like the regional park it's going to be. Downtown Reno is going to be a regional park someday, especially when Tahoe and Pyramid are connected. Take an expansive approach and assess everybody with that idea in mind. Build a new police station and quit trying to do stuff on the cheap.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Rison.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Risoni, and my family has one property in the 700 block of West Fifth Street in Zone 1 on the police map. Any statistics or emails I refer to were provided by Mr. Hardesty. I realize that for the expanded SAD to go forward, council must find that two conditions are met. One, a sufficient number of qualified petitions are returned, and two, everyone in the entire district benefits. So I would just like to make a few points that may be pertinent to these conditions. First, I would like to mention that of the 443 favorable petitions, 291, or 65.6 percent, came from condominium owners, and 61, or 13.8 percent, came from casinos. Only by combining these two special interests can the city claim to have reached a sufficient number of petitions. Without the condominium owners, the 10 percent of property owners' goal is not met. Without the casinos, the 25 percent of assessed value goal is not met. Second, I would like to note that of the members on the Citizens Committee who voted in favor of an expanded district, 10 have interests in the original red zone, one has interests in both the red and yellow, and three do not have any interests in either zone. If the committee had any members representing just the yellow zone, none of them voted in favor of the expansion. Third, although the city says in its letter of January 24th that the volunteers, quote, "will provide a visible deterrent in the expanded district," end quote, it is obvious that local government is not on the same page as the RPD. I have a forwarded email from a deputy chief that plainly states the volunteer program is meant for the, quote, unquote, downtown corridor. My family's property, one half a block from the yellow boundary, is 15 blocks from the southern end of downtown. I will never see a volunteer and a regular officer hoofing it along the west, along West Fifth Street. Yet I'm going to be assessed for a program from which others will receive all the benefit. Yes, I have been given vague promises that the volunteer program will free up the bike patrol for the areas that seem, have seen a displacement of crime. Zone 1 has not experienced such displacement. The bike patrol is going to concentrate on zones like 7 and 8, which have seen displacement. Again, I ask, what benefit am I deriving from the special tax assessment on the property? So I respectfully request that the members of the city council dig more deeply into the police numbers and think about whether the proposed boundaries of the new SAD, SAD are too wide to ensure that everyone in the district will benefit. Also, does the city council want to be seen as aligning itself with two special interest groups heavily concentrated in the original red zone, who are imposing their will upon a much more diverse group of citizens in the yellow zone, 90 percent of whom did not return favorable petitions for the new SAD?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask him a question? Sir, what is, how is your property used, your family's property used?
It's commercial.
How, what business operates there?
Discount office supply.
Town office supply?
Discount, oh, I'm sorry.
Discount office supply, so like a retail operation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you. Any other public comment cards? I'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Okay. I will start, since I am the liaison to the Police Maintenance District and attended, I think, maybe all but three of the working group meetings since we set up the committee last year. You know, it started initially, like any process, all over about downtown, you know, the complex issues, that the multifaceted approach that needs to be taken to make our downtown what we want it to be. And I think this is just one component of that. And after a couple of meetings, we drilled down to what we need to do. I think what has happened, there's kind of concern, I think, that was expressed, is there's a spreading of the responsibility and the payment. And, and I think it was justified through the process. Mr. Atchison's property from, you know, his west side of Center Street, which has like old Victorians to the east, maybe, I think it includes the, is that the SAE house or one of the frat houses? You know, maybe because I see, when I drive down Center Street going toward, when I drive Center Street and on Ninth Street towards the Valley Road, you know, Evelyn Mount Center, I always see like a university police officer over there. They seem to guard that area. If I was to cut out an area, I might consider cutting out that. But other than that, I do think it is a justified expansion. But I want to say one thing that came up a lot, a big tone in the discussions was, what do we get? And now that we're giving more resources, you know, what are we get? What's the level of service? And I never felt that that was satisfactorily addressed. You know, you're downtown, you're going to put your law enforcement officers there. They're not going to be cruising suburban neighborhoods all the time. They're going to be where your intensity is. And so I think if we go forward, I know everyone wants to move on to the maintenance district approach, and that subcommittee will kick off. But I think we need to work with our police department to bring to us an explanation of what the priorities are and how the resources are deployed. I think that is a best faith offering to our citizens. The complexity of downtown has changed a lot since this was initially set up. There were not a lot of residents, and that was a lot of the theme there, too. So the needs change, and I think we need a ground zero up to see how, what our resources and policing programs are in this area. So I'm generally in support. I might, if others, I might make a motion to move that little west, that east end of, north of Ninth Street out, however.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Rob Boney, City Attorney's Office. And I know a lot of this information is contained in the staff report, but what council will be asked to determine here today is whether the public interest will benefit by the expansion of the SAD in this area. And Mr. Hardesty has a little small presentation that I think might be helpful in allowing some of the council members to hear some of the dialogue that haven't gone to the meetings. But that is only at council's discretion, if you'd be interested in that, that little report. I think it might.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Adra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it probably would be good for us to hear it, because this is action that we've been considering for a good, long time, and we don't want to have the impression that we haven't absolutely, we've asked for lots of additional information, and I would even say corrections along the way, so that would be beneficial. Steve, in your, your report, would you absolutely make reference to two of the points, at least, that we heard in public comment just a bit ago, about noticing for this meeting in particular, and the accumulation of, of how we get to the numbers that we need, of the 50 percent that we need? How did, how did we get there? Because there was a question about that as well.
Yes, ma'am. Steve Hardesty, Public Works Management Analyst. Okay, get the map. Before you today is the sufficiency public hearing to make sure that we have a sufficient number in the petition. And we also have to have a public, an, or yeah, we have to have a council agreement that is in the public's best interest that we actually do the expansion, and that the ex, that the extra police officers and the extra attention that we give is in the best interest of the public. So I've got two portions of my presentation. The first part is the, part is the numbers. Council gave us direction to proceed with the petition on the 15th of January. The 26th of January, we got everything in the mail, and it was all sent out. We sent out 800, 1,833 letters. It was concluded on the 26th of February, although NRS doesn't necessarily have an ending date. We set that, that date so we could have a final, because we, our timeline is so tight that we couldn't have it go on any longer. We had it get before you, as quickly as we could. But in that amount of time, the numbers required, we needed 184 total, as far as signatures go, to get the 18, or the 10 percent. We ended up with 443. We needed $60 million in assessed value. We got $85,480,000. So we greatly exceeded the numbers that were required to expand the district. Now, inside those numbers, of the 443 received, we had 359 that were in the original district. Okay? Of those numbers, which were mentioned earlier, 291 of them did come from the condominiums, 61 of them did come from the casino properties, and 91 of them were from other commercial properties or vacant lots. And of that, 84 of those came from outside the district. We had quite a few folks sign in from Arlington Towers. We had Park Towers were also participants, and we also had the Tsera Project, the future Tsera Project. All those properties came in. Half of those were in the original district, and half of them were outside the district. As far as the assessed values go, 82 million of it did come from inside the district. 3 million came from outside the district. What was an interesting thing that I thought was kind of interesting to bring before you is the outside area, the part that we're trying to expand to, had 817 properties in it. Of that, we had 84, 84 properties did that. So we've got, we even got our 10 percent even in that expanded area, although we didn't make the AV part. We did make the 10 percent. And we also received, after the deadline of March 7th, we received seven additional petitions in favor. Three of those were from the outside, and it was an additional, I think it was an additional 300, almost $400,000 in assessed value. Are there any questions on the numbers?
Mr. Mayor, could, could you talk about, I'll call it the methodology?
Okay.
Because the last time this was in front of us, there was concern about physical knocking on the door, trying to coerce. Can you talk about the methodology, please?
Yes, ma'am. On the 26th of January, in the mail went 1,833 letters. That was it. There was no follow-up on it or anything else. In that letter, we told them the process. We went from the meeting that we'd be holding today, the meeting that we'll be holding on the 26th, if we get past today. And also at that time, I was under the impression that it would have been May 13th for the budget hearing to levy the assessments. We corrected that in a subsequent letter to the 20th. And that was it. We gave them the whole outline of what was going to happen, every step we were going to take. The petition was included, and Exhibit B was, was a copy of the map showing where the expansion area was and where the original area was. And that was it. And on, as things came in, they were date-stamped. The folks that received the letters were given directions that if they wanted to be in favor of the district, to sign the petition and return it. Those that were opposed didn't have to do anything. If they wanted to have a comment, they could send that in with the petition, unsigned. And we have 11 of those that have been turned over to the clerk, and you have them in your packet. Aside from that, that's it. There was no door knocking or anything else. We did have several phone calls. People asked, you know, what does this mean to me, that kind of thing. We had quite a few of those. But aside from that, that was it.
Question. Can you explain to me kind of what the neighborhood is in Area 8?
Oh, okay, that's, that's between the freeway and Ninth Street. There's several UNR properties. There's, I think there's about a dozen properties that they own in that general area. There's four or five weekly, monthly motels. There's a liquor store, a couple of bars. And everybody knows where Jimmy John's is.
Enough said. Enough said. You're, you're good. Thank you.
If I might add, Councilmember Jordan is your ward. The area that I thought maybe is a little out of character is going up Center Street. There's a number of Victorians on your west side of the road. Mr. Atchison's, in Number 8. So when you go from, you know, the freeway off-ramp north to the university, you know, pillars, that block of Center Street is being included in. And if you continue to the east, you know, it's the SAE house there?
Yes.
Yeah. I would suggest and think, and, you know, I was, that thought came to me from Mr. Atchison, is that that block, both sides of Center Street and then heading east, you know, maybe it would be within our discretion to pull out and say, not put them into the area.
One of the things that I think, I would like to go through, what we did is I just completed the numbers part. That's part one. I think the city attorney and his, and his comments has made the determination that we are sufficient as far as numbers and as far as assessed value go. The second part of it is, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to walk you through each one of those areas and give you a description of what it is and why we've included it in the district. Okay? If that's, is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if you can, I can speak.
You betcha I can talk faster. Okay, Area Number 1 up there, where St. Mary's and everything is, is a mixed-use area with many weekly and monthly motels. There's quite a few vacant areas. There's high foot traffic, and there's high calls for service. If you look on the, on the maps up there, you can see the calls for service for each area. Area 2, pretty much, and Area 1 also, because of the, the way the district was created in the first place, it was not allowed to be in the district because it wasn't part of a redevelopment area. The, one of the, one of the reasons that you can have a special assessment district assessment district for police protection is it has to be within a redevelopment area. And at that time, Area Number 1 was not included in a redevelopment, and that's in RDA 2. Area 2, it was omitted for some reason and Fourth Street basically connected to the Gold Dust West and none of the properties on either side were ever included. That area is also a mixed-use area with many weekly and monthly motels, vacant areas, heavy foot traffic, and high calls for service. Again, we can see that we're holding steady at about 1,400, which is almost the same as Area Number 1. Area Number 3 is one of our anomalies. It is a mixed-use area. It's got heavy foot traffic and it's virtually around, surrounded by the existing district. When the original district was created in the mid 1990s, they gerrymandered, went right on around Arlington Towers and that area, went right down Rothway, and then went back out to cross over on Arlington. What that did is we've got, this district is basically surrounding that thing. At the same time, the police officers had their help program going on over at the bus station and you had, that area was almost completely surrounded by police in that area, which also brought down the calls for service in that area. Area Number 4, mixed-use area, vacant areas, heavy foot traffic, and steady calls for Area Number 5, again, mixed-use area with weekly and monthly motels, lots of apartments and rentals, vacant areas, and steady calls for service, again, in excess of 800 for 2013. Area Number 6 is mixed-use entertainment focal point with the ballparks. We've got about six or seven months of very heavy activity in that area. Got the Community Assistance Center up to the north of that. You've got quite a few bars and other things, and there's increasing calls for service in that area. We're in excess of 3,000 for 2013. Area Number 7, mixed-use area with numerous weekly and monthly motels, industrial area, vacant areas, and increasing calls for service. That area is, is really, really taken off with 2,600 calls last year and holding steady right around 2,500. Area Number 8, which is the one that we're in question with Mr. Atchison. It's a mixed-use area with weekly and monthly motels. There's at least four, possibly five motels in that small amount of area. It's in a transition zone between this UNR and the city and it has increasing calls for service, almost 1,500 last year and is floating right around 1,300 to 1,400 continuously for the past four years. What has happened is that we've had quite a bit of solid improvements in our downtown area. And one of the things they talked about, that, that they talked about was moving or pushing the undesirables into outlying areas. One of the things that I've learned from the police department over the past few months is mixed-use areas are very highly frequented by the folks that we're trying to either help or displace. And these areas on the outside are all mixed-use areas. If you look around the borders of all that except for possibly right there at Valley, you're going to find residential properties, high residential properties. These folks don't like to move into high residential areas. There's too many people, they're too visible, and there's no place for them to kind of disappear. What we're trying to do with this thing is we are going to, with your guidance and direction, is we're going to operate in the middle, push them out where we have been pushing them out, and now we're going to try to address that area. And we're going to help as many as we possibly can. And the other thing I learned is, is if they don't like it, they don't like the pressure, they'll leave. And possibly that'll happen as well. As far as activities in those areas, I would tend to disagree. I'm sure that those areas are going to see a lot of police officers. We're going to have the foot patrols with the volunteer officers and everything that the police department's working on right now. They're highly active. We've got kind of a pilot program going right now, the police department does, with, right now they're putting two teams of two officers at a time on foot patrol in the downtown area. They're doing that about once a week, once every other week, and it has been tremendous. They have met business owner after business owner. They're out there with the tourists, they're out there with the locals, and the undesirables that, they don't want an officer looking over their shoulder every five minutes. So, it is seeming to work and we're going to continue that and make it even better. There's several programs that, with the expansion, we'll be able to move into and be able to use. And if you want further detail, I've got Chief Pitts and Deputy Chief Robinson that can give you a little bit more detail on these. But the community safety and service teams, the CSAS teams, be able to work in those areas. Kids to Senior Corner will be able to work in these areas. Mobile outreach safety teams, the MOST program will be out there. There'll be undercover operations that we'll be able to use in these areas now. Surge operations, foot patrols, be able to go out into those areas as well as motel intervention. There's a lot of pluses and benefits that are going to be added to these, to this expanded area. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, would you just give us a brief overview of your, 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 of your,[1036.44]
You provide a service to people that may legitimately need it, all right? We can't forget that. And also creates what everybody has referred to, all the speakers, this, this, it's, it's basically a form of criminology in Septed, which is displacement. And we're not trying to push undesirable people out of a geography. What we're trying to do with all these resources is make sure they understand that we're policing it, and these resources can provide them with, with a network and, and can assist them in the challenges they have. But with overflow, we can manage that, some 2,400 calls for service you saw, I believe in Zone 7, Steve, was it? And 8. I mean, that's, that's related to the Community Assistance Center. So that's a quick overview, and I'll take any questions that the council or the mayor may have.
Appreciate it very much, thank you. Any counsel, Ms. Jordan?
Quick questions for you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
As part of this process, and I appreciate you guys have spent a lot of time and put a lot of great heads together to come up with a, um, a solution to a, a spreading, ever-growing problem, and I appreciate all the efforts. Can you tell me a little bit about, I guess I'll call it a recognition and a reprimand program through the assessment process to, uh, for those repeat offender properties? How, how are they being additionally assessed or penalized for being those repeat offender properties? And on the flip side of that coin, how are we recognizing and rewarding the ones that are doing it right?
That's an excellent question, ma'am. On the penalty side, we, the Reno Police Department is not, I would say, not really imposing penalties. If we have code enforcement with us, if we're running a CCS operation, I guess you could say that could be, uh, they could be subjected to a penalty, a citation, or a letter making recommendations for, for abatement and things like that. Really, we spent most of our efforts downtown in the last couple of years on education and building a network with people who are trying to work together. We've recognized some people at council, specifically for graffiti and helping us with calls for service, and I think that that's an excellent point. We need to recognize more people in, in this quarter, really all over the city, for the things they do, because it's really the community that helps us get this done. We could never do it without the assistance of the community. I think we could do a better job of that, so.
And I, I guess my, my point was, I know that as with graffiti, it's normally a small percentage of people that are doing a large percentage of the, the damage. And I would assume that applies to some of your repeat offender properties, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I, I would say that's fair enough.
Okay, so aside, there's no financial stick for some of these properties that continue to consume a large part of your calls for service?
No, ma'am. The previous council did have us and the city attorney look at that, especially when we had the bar problems downtown. Ms. Adra is shaking her head, and, and I think we were kind of stuck legally with not being able to impose any penalties on those bars, specifically in that case. Rob?
Councilmember John, Rob Boni, City Attorney's Office. As this would be an assessment levied against all property owners within the expanded SAD, we would, they would all have to be treated equally based on the formula that Mr. Hardisty and, and the city staff generates. So i- if I'm understanding, are you asking, can people who aren't using the services perhaps not have to pay?
No, I, I think maybe, and I'm getting off a little off topic of what we're maybe doing today. I guess mine was more of, how do we, if you have a property owner that continually gets calls for service at, at their property, and they're not managing their property right, and, but you continue to show up and deal with the issues at their property, I guess if I didn't have a financial stick to make me change my behavior and put up additional securities or do operations a little differently, I don't know that I would change either if you, if you kept showing up to take care of the problem, so.
That's a good point, ma'am. And Mr. Woodley just walked in, but let me revisit two concepts which are solid. They, they are just conceptual, they're operationally sound. The first one is motel intervention, and I don't just want to pick out motels, but we track motel calls for service, crime, and things like that within that specific property or that geography. Motel intervention goes out and does education, there's some regulation, regulatory things they do, and then basically they crunch numbers and tell them, you're going to meet these standards by a certain time, or there's going to be penalties imposed. And Alex can talk specifically to that. What CSAS has done, again, I had mentioned earlier, a little bit more education, but with this proposal, excuse me, and the direction from Mr. Klinger, I think they're going to have more teeth in their operations, where they're going to be able to say, listen, you're going to have 30 days, or whatever falls under the RMC or the NRS, to follow these guidelines, and then we're going to impose sections. And I think that's kind of, it's, it's an excellent question. Both those programs work very, very well. I think the future development of CSAS will, will go where you're asking, really.
I just want to make sure we're recognizing the ones that are doing it right.
Thank you, Chief. For the record, Alex Woodley, Realization Manager. I can make this pretty quick and, and to the point because your issues with regards to those that continue to violate, I'll give you two prime examples. Number one, we have, for example, the Fourth Street on the Rosa Motel. That was one particular property that we did have that type of situation, and right now that property stands closed. We have a new owner who's investing into it, who's remodeling the property. That was an outcome of the process that we have currently. Another one would be, for example, I don't know if you remember, a gentleman that came before you several weeks ago and claimed that we were picking on him, and the reason why, the only reason why we even went to that hotel and dealt with that property in the fashion we did with the task force, which includes the Police Department, Health Department, Building Department, Code Enforcement, and Business License, is because as a result of the Police Department looking at the calls for service, getting with the other departments, and we get together as a team, and then we follow through. On average, when we do do these task force, the property owners are looking at anywhere between $50,000 to $100,000 worth of required improvements, because just as the behaviors on that property, more than likely what we've seen in the nexus in the condition of said property. So we deal with it from multiple levels within the different departments. Another note that we do take into consideration is that sometimes, not just because of the number of calls that may exist, we actually have to go in deeper, because sometimes we'll get calls for service, and it may not even be related to said property. It could be related to another incident or another issue. So we actually take the time to make sure, we wanted to make that clear, because we don't want property owners to feel, oh, we don't want to call any department, because then it gets hit against our property. The Police Department is really good about actually looking at each individual call for service to make sure that that one that's identified does pertain to the property and the property owner. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just, one other comment, you know, I, I think we're displacing behavior, not people. You know, everyone lives in the street and belongs in the public space, but I guess at time of budget, if we go through this, I'll be looking with these additional resources, you know, how to the SCSAS, you know, what those resources are, how much of this is going to patrol. I really think that those were the questions that the participants, the people who, a lot of them stepped up, are doing, and I think we need to really be solid in showing people the results. And I was at the Chiefs meeting yesterday, and they do a survey every year. Eighty percent of the public says they feel safe in downtown in the daytime, forty percent not, not so at night. That, if we use that as the metric for these resources and figure out, work from there to how to deploy the resources, I think we will get there on this one component of bringing back our downtown to how we want to do it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You got some?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sheehan?
Yes, I noticed that Ms. Roberta Ross is here. I'd like you to just give me a quick thought of your ideas and, because I know you've been a big stakeholder in this, so.
Roberta Ross, and ideas on what? Help me out.
How, how you feel about this process, is?
About the process?
Yeah, because you've been very vocal about this, so I want to make sure that, you know, what your thoughts and concerns are.
I think the process has been great. I think Steve and the chief have brought forward good information. A lot of people attended the meetings. I believe, Steve, at the close of our meeting, we had 100% consensus of the people that had been attending it, and I think we, we worked it all out. And what the chief has up here, I think is great. CSAS has been fabulous, and I, I think it's all working in a positive direction.
All right. That's what I was looking for. I was just concerned, because I know that you had been here before, and you had a lot of concerns, and I wanted to make sure that your voice was heard, so that's.
I appreciate it, and I think the outcome is great.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorch? You want to give me a motion?
So we got, we've got two choices here on the motion. Which one is staff recommending?
Councilmember Dorch, Rob Boni, City Attorney's Office. They're, they're sequential, so in order to get to the second motion, council needs to make a finding that the public interest will benefit by the provision, so can't get to two unless you approve number one.
I got you, okay. So since the city attorney's office has determined that petitions are sufficient in form and number of signatures, based on the testimony presented, I can make the findings that the public interest will benefit by providing a higher level of police protection in the expanded police SAD.
Have a second, all in favor?
Can I, can I offer a friendly amendment that we exclude from the area covered by the petition? That area that is east of the alley separating Center Street and Virginia Street, north of Ninth Street?
Now, Steve, if we exclude anybody from this, it's going to put an additional burden on the rest of the SAD?
Yes, sir. Steve Hardisty, Public Works.
So anything that we do as far as excluding anyone is going to change the numbers for everyone else within the SAD?
It's only going, it's only going to take care of one or two people.
It will change everybody else, will probably have to trigger another petition.
It's typical SAD. So I, I would not change my motion.
Okay. Same thing with the second, okay. Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries, seven one, seven no. Unanimous. You voted no?
No, she voted for.
Not hearing a second for my friendly amendment, I.
Okay, all right.
So, Mr. Mayor, since council has made the findings that the public interest will benefit by providing a higher level of police protection in the expanded police SAD, I move to approve the petition to expand the downtown police special assessment district, and pursuant to NRS 268.783, I direct staff to draft an ordinance that, one, sets the general standards for the level of police protection within the district, and that, two, defines the district boundaries.
Have a motion, have a second, have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We did have one of our former speakers requesting some input. Sir, do you still have a question or comment?
Yes, I.
No, don't come up to the microphone.
Fred Atchison, and I, I'm in the area that was addressed by Jenny Bruckus. On my block, on the west side of Center Street, the university owns a majority of the parcels on that side. On the other side of the street, of Center Street, they own all of the parcels, so they're excluded, I believe, anyway. On Evans Avenue, they own, I believe, one of the parcels on Evans Avenue, then there's Evans Park and the SAE. So in that district, the person that's impacted the most by this decision is myself. I don't think it changes the numbers. There are three private parcels on the west side of Center Street, and the rest virtually are all the university. So they're excluded, I believe, from any assessment whatsoever. So it has a disproportionate impact on my two houses, which are 120 years old and are difficult enough to maintain, along with all the other assessments that we have recently completed paying. So that's the situation there. The university is taking it over bit by bit, but I am disproportionately affected, and we don't have any calls. The calls are at the motels on, on Virginia Street. Virtually all of the calls, the 1,482 calls, are in the motel on Virginia Street. I've been harping at the city and the, and the University of Nevada to do something about those motels for years. They don't do anything about the motels. Now they want to increase the, the, the district, which really only affects me.
Okay, thank you very much. Right. Have a motion and have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G, G1 has been pulled, so now we go to H, resolution?
H1 is resolution number 7952, resolution approving the cost to be assessed in the City of Reno, Nevada, 2013, Special Assessment District Number One, and ordering the city engineer to prepare and submit a preliminary assessment roll.
Chair, entertain a motion?
No motion.
Okay. Have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to item H2, resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, that one was read earlier.
Excuse me?
That one was voted on earlier.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. We'll go down to item J, oops, one's done. Now we're at item J2.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansburgh, Public Works. I have a presentation here. Just want to give a status update on the sewer fund. Kind of what I'm doing is an accountability report. When I came to council two, well, three years ago, we presented initially a rate increase, the reason for the rate increase in the sewer fund, and just want to come back and report what we have done and what we plan to do in the near future. With that in mind, just, I have a few slides here in the beginning. It's just a very broad brush on the, on the things that we do in Public Works, but primarily we have two systems. We have our sewer system and our storm drain. When you think of the sewer fund, obviously you think of the sewer services we provide, but we also want to show that although the sewer system collects the sewer, takes it to the plant for treatment, our storm system collects the storm water but delivers it to the river without treatment. Just a short depiction here to show those two underground systems and the work that we do. In Public Works, a fairly large portion of the work we have is involved in the sewer fund, involved with our environmental engineering, maintenance, and operations in our capital projects. With that, we have our Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. This facility was built in 1965, and we treat about 28 to 30 million gallons per day. The Reno Sted Water Reclamation Facility in Sted treats about 1.3 million gallons per day. Part of the services we provide, environmental control, is the regulatory arm of what we do in, in the sewer, within the sewer fund and in Public Works, looking for, making sure that the, what goes into the sewer will not impact our treatment plant adversely, also making sure that what goes into our storm drains is not going to affect the river adversely. We do public outreach and explain and look for where those causes are, and make sure that best management practices are being used to keep those contaminants out of either our sewer system or our storm water system. We also provide education. Earlier today, our city manager mentioned the Addy Award in regards to the Only Rain in the Storm Drain campaign and the ART campaign, so I just show a little bit of the public outreach that we do there. Obviously, with all the assets that we have out there in the collection system, both for sewer and storm drain, there's a lot of maintenance and operations that goes in. I won't go through those in detail, but we do have 27 lift stations that, in addition to the gravity sewers that we normally would have, we have 27 lift stations or pumps that pump the sewage from a lower elevation to a higher elevation. Obviously, our fleet, to perform this work, we have 50 miles of open drainage, so we go out there and do maintenance. In this case, would be taking the debris out where the bar screen is and, and removing it out of the ditches. Also, our storm drains, so we, our basins, we go through, there's a sump in each of the storm drains that we have, we go through and actually remove that debris from those storm drains to keep it out of the river. And just a quick inventory, I'll give you an idea, over 700 miles of sewers, those 27 lift stations I mentioned, 20,000 manholes, the storm drain lines, the open ditch, and our catch basins or drop inlets. We also provide capital project administration. At Tom Wharf, it's a joint facility owned by City of Reno and City of Sparks, we provide the capital improvement, administer the capital improvement program. City of Sparks operates and maintains the facility, and then, of course, at Reno Sted, we both own, operate, and maintain. In capital projects, we also perform oversight of our excavation and replacement, our collection system, whether in neighborhoods or large interceptors, as well as quite a bit of work we're doing lately is trenchless technology. We, we take the lead in the region for this, where you actually can go through without having to open up streets, you can go in and rehabilitate pipes from the inside by putting a liner. And then what I'm really here to talk to you about today is how we fund it. So we have two accounts. We have a user fee account, that is the revenue we receive from both commercial and residential sewer user charges, that pays for the collection and treatment of the sewage and also for these capital maintenance projects. We also have a connection fee account, that's when development comes in, they have connection fees that they pay in, that's to help us for the increased capacity and size of the pipes for the collection system, or for the increasing capacity at our treatment plants. In 2011, I had recommended a rate increase to cover capital projects. We were, we could only fund a very minimal amount of capital projects, and we had much greater needs. And with that, on that top line of the total percent increase, it's called four plus four, because we had a 4% increase for four additional years, I was asking council to add four to that to make it eight. And then add additional year in 2015, that shows a five plus three, because we're anticipating, we have C, Consumer Price Index added to the fine every year thereafter. With this, it allowed us to get a fair amount of capital programs spent, and that was caused by looking at this map, the age of our pipe, and giving an idea of what we're looking at. Everything in red is over 60 years in age, yellow, 40 to, 40 to 60 years. We also delineate where the bad pipe is, and so here's a map of where, where we have the bad pipe, meaning that pipe that we were looking to, a, a short term, you know, within a five, 10-year program, where we've identified it needs to be corrected, and needing the funds to do that. This graph here is probably the most important of the entire presentation. You can see fiscal year 2010, we were running about $40 million total revenue, and that was at that 4% increases, and going forward, over those, the five increases at 8%, it's, brings us up to about 60 million in the user fee account. You can see from the green line that those were the amount of capital projects we were doing those first few years, we just didn't have a lot for capital projects. Since then, we've been able to ramp the program, and that's showing kind of our next five years and what we anticipate going forward with those projects. The only reason we could get as high as we could there in year fiscal year 2015 is based on the reserves that we had. We were able, we had almost nothing in reserves over those first few years, they'll bring the reserves back up, and going forward, we recommend that the reserves would come down but would maintain at a healthy level. Finally, I wanted to show you the projects that we have been able to complete, at least with the collection system, from 2011 to, to the present. I figure it's best to show you a, a visual like this, easier to tell. And these, these are the areas that we project to do with our collection system in the next five years. Finally, I wanted to point out the importance that the funds have had. This is a photo of the lines going to the Truckee Meadows Reclamation Facility. We had an emergency at the headworks. The headworks is where all the sewage influent comes into the plant before it's treated. It's then pumped from that location up into the plant and goes through the process. That headworks went into operation in 1965 and has never been taken out of operation. We had a, a problem with some of the pumps leaking, where we needed to get access and do a rehabilitation project. We had identified that in a risk ranking, we had, we're actually under design, working towards that when we had the emergency. This shows you the system with all the pipes that are coming into the plant, what we had to put in to actually keep the flows going above ground during the time that we could do the actual repairs to the headworks themselves. This shows you as those pipes were coming around the corner, going into the, the initial treatment at the facility. And finally, this was the work that had to be recompleted, which was just outside the headworks, where we were, where the lines come in, and we have created this so that it has redundant systems, so that we can take one thing down at a time and not have to shut the whole thing off in the future. And that will also be true when we do some additional repairs in the future. With that being said, here's our priorities, looking forward the next five years primarily. The collection system is actually more of a 10-year plan, but Tom Wharf, we are looking at about $94 million, 64 million of that would be Reno's responsibility based on our ownership portion. Our priorities are to ensure timely replacement of the key systems in the treatment facility and to maximize the efficiencies and the energy and process. With that, the next presentation you'll hear will be from regarding a performance contract to do that. We also have a little bit of work at Reno Sparks, or Reno Sted Water Reclamation Facility, about 3 million to prepare ourselves from growth in the next few years, as well as, of course, the big number there is the collection system. We've identified about 170 miles of pipe that will need to be repaired, replaced, or lined. And then finally, we do have some drainage projects as well. I know that was kind of quick, but I just want to give you an update on the overall fund, to let you know that we are, we are healthy. The increase has, has worked where it needed to work, and it's allowed us to be able to get the capital programs done. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any question?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I sit as the representative to the JCC, and I think, you know, bar none, the plant and the collection system are our most important infrastructure asset that the city has, you know, particularly because we're not full service, but even if we were. I guess the headworks was a good wake-up. It was, that and the electrical was, what, about $6 million?
Correct.
Accelerated money, and, but it proved that people's head is in the game right, because it was at the height of their risk analysis. And so they've done that, I think, you know, I don't know what happened for years before, because we are in a tough situation. So with that, John, can you talk about the Environment Department letter that we anticipate coming to the plant on our compliance issues, and the capacity concerns raised by the nitrogen processing?
Yes, to answer the question, last year at the plant, the nitrogen level, we have a certain level, we can only have, on average, so many pounds of nitrogen go to the river throughout the year, it was exceeded. We have looked at what, what caused the exceedance and are making sure that we can make the corrections not to have that happen again. Some things that are very important about that, if you think about the nitrogen going in, one of the best things we can do is to use effluent for irrigation. As we use the effluent for irrigation, we're taking water that would go back to the river that would have nitrogen in it, we're moving that out to irrigation purposes, say at UNR Farms, our golf courses, those types of things. So it's very important that we have that outlet during those summer months to take that poundage away, so that the average through the winter months and the summer months gets us below that 500-pound threshold. So it's a, it's a very, a very big concern, and I, and I think the question that Council Member Bruckus is, is drawing attention to is the fact that although we may have physical capacity at the plant for flow, we, we really find that nitrogen is one of the limiting factors that we have. The next project that we talk about, the next presentation here, the performance contract, actually has a process in there that will help improve that, but we still have to be very diligent in the process out there in the operation and treatment to ensure that we don't exceed that, that nitrogen level.
Yeah, I guess there, maybe I'd, I'd say.
It was just, it was just a status update.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I, I look forward to more presentations like this, because I think there are issues that will be coming forward to us. This Environment Department response is one, certainly. So, thank you.
Good report, thank you very much. All right, let's go to item J3.
Mayor and council? Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator. Apologize for my voice. I have a very quick presentation, and then we can get into questions. As John mentioned, we did our math a little bit different, and his is right, though. We have just under $100 million worth of CIP needs that we've identified out at the plant. About a year and a half ago, you approved us to go forward with a financial-grade audit to see if through performance contracting, we could find innovative ways to achieve more of those CIP projects. We wanted to look at lowering our energy costs, reducing our chemical use, and lowering our operational maintenance costs. There was also a desire to look at a path towards net zero energy for the plant. There's been a few plants around the world who've looked at it, and the manager of the City of Sparks was really interested in it, as were our engineering staff. We were looking at the nutrient discharge into the rivers, council member Bruckus just alluded to, on what we could do to lower those amounts, and also looking at emissions reductions. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. We went out to bid, after council gave us direction to do that, we hired an energy services company to go out, perform the energy audit, operation audit at the plant. They, in turn, go out and bid for local subcontractors, they perform the measurement and verification based on our standards of operation. They have a portion of this project that's the Energy and Environmental Reporting System that allows us to look at what we're doing and what we're saving in real time. And the real important aspect of this is it's a guaranteed savings project. So once we approve this project going forward, they're financially guaranteeing the savings that we will get back to the cities. What we're bringing forward today is a project that's just under $25 million worth of projects that'll get us just over $1.1 million a year in guaranteed savings, and that's the minimum, they have to hit that amount. Six, just under 6 million kilowatt hours in energy savings, 30,000 gallons of methanol, 1.1 tons of alum reduced, and reduced biosolids hauling out to the landfill. They completed the audit, put the projects together before you, some of the key components to that are the installing an 850-kilowatt biogas co-gen system, changing changing the digestion process, installing the nutrient recovery system. And in that system, I'll touch on it in a minute, but that's where we were able to pull some of those nutrients out of the stream and keep them from going into the river. And this is the list of projects that we have put together here. And when we went out to do it, we were looking at the traditional ESCO model, where the ESCO would go out, finance the project, and then we would pay them back through the savings, very much like we did at City of Reno, the project that we did with all of our energy retrofits and renewable energy projects. In this case, though, what we found was, we had some of these projects identified in the CIP, and through reserves and other funds that are available through what John just presented there, we're able to self-finance this on a pay-as-you-go model, so that once we install these systems, we'll start getting the energy savings to the operational budget from day one, as each of them come online. Want to highlight, the first one is the nutrient recovery system. That is the one we talked about, where we pull out the nitrogen and phosphorus from the centrate. We have a biogas co-gen, where we'll be burning the methane gas at the plant to generate power for the plant, and also not to flare off the methane gas that we're currently flaring. The digester domes, we have five out there. Three of them are working, we need to fix the other two, so that we have redundancy and that we're capturing all the methane gas that is out there. The dewatering upgrades, this broke into two components. One, we were looking at near-term dewatering upgrade, based on being on the priority list of what we know is next in line for failure, or we anticipate for failure. The second part would be energy efficiencies that we can get by putting in more efficient pumps and dealing with the centrate. And then the MyEnergyPro, that's that software I was talking about, that allows us to look and monitor the systems. And that's how we get to the 25 million. Overall, the project benefits that we'll get out of that are a 93% reduction in the phosphorus, and we look at the phosphorus permit, we, we're in great shape right now, but it is constantly being discussed, but we'll be able to pull out 93% of that phosphorus, and it'll pick up 7% of that nitrogen that gives us a little more room with what we're dealing with on the discharge permit there. A while back, we had a cogeneration system working out at the plant, and the siloxanes and sulfide gases corroded the system, so it stopped working. We're in the process of putting in a new gas conditioning system out at the plant, and once that's in, we can demo the old co-gen, put in the new co-gen, and get going there. And that's important for our Wash County air quality permit, as well as EPA Region 9 looking at the emissions coming out of there. The project also moves us further down that path to net zero energy. That gets us to about 50%. You'll see in the financial grade audit, there's a full path of how we can get to 96% energy self-sufficiency out at the plant. It was too costly at this point in time. We have that road, that roadmap, and as funds come available, we'll be bringing back projects to try and get there and balance that with the other priorities that we have out at the plant. It was important, as it always has been to this council, to look at what we have for local labor and local products. So when we, when Ameresco went out and bid for all the subcontractors, the labors, the equipment that's going out there, they went local first and got local where we could get local. So the project there is about 75% local. As I said, we found the money in there on the pay-as-you-go, so that we could pay for it, not finance it, not have to bond it or carry financing charges. So it's good to go there, and we'll save the 1.1 million-year energy savings as those come online, and we'll just use those in the future operation of the plant, future investments of the plant. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here today. I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the city manager for the opportunity to comment. I'm sorry?
Identify yourself for the record.
Will do. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Paul Thompson, and I'm the Director of the Governor's Office of Energy and the Governor's Energy Advisor. And it's not every day that I come to talk about waste treatment plants, but I felt especially obliged to talk about this project, because I think it's so fantastic. As many of you may or may not know, most government facilities can potentially reduce their energy consumption between 25 to 50% or more, and they are typically cash-strapped to do so, and that's why performance contracting offers this great approach. And the Governor's Office of Energy has three major goals, and that is the promotion of renewable energy development, the implementation of energy efficiency programs, and the transportation of energy outside of the state. And so this project clearly fits into that second goal of reducing energy consumption. The State of Nevada and the Governor's Office of Energy have laid the groundwork for performance contracting in this state through statute. We have authorizing legislation to guide both state agencies and local governments who want to use energy savings to pay for the facility improvements. And we are proud of the great results that they have achieved, and the City of Reno is really a shining example of that. It has a proud history of utilizing performance contracting over the last decade, and actually over like the last four or five years, as you may or may not know. You've previously invested $19 million to achieve an annual savings of $1.7 million while reducing energy consumption by more than a megawatt or 1,000 kilowatts, and 50% of that energy savings is right here in this building that you guys are now in. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that's also in part because of the great work that your administrator, Dr. Geddes, is doing every day, in and out. So I just wanted to commend you for considering this project, which is a fantastic collaboration between the City of Reno and the City of Sparks, that again realizes, as Jason has said, an annual savings of about $1.1 million while reducing energy consumption by more than half a megawatt or 664 kilowatts. This project really exemplifies what performance contracting offers, which is a tremendous opportunity to not only manage your energy budget, but to upgrade and modernize decrepit facilities, reduce the taxpayer burden of growing government energy budgets, and incorporate the use of renewable energy and create jobs right here in Reno. So with that, I just want to thank the council again for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that this project is really an example or inspires other municipalities to do this kind of work and follow in your footsteps to use government dollars more wisely and modernize facilities and enhance environmental stewardship. And if any of those entities are here or listening online, I would encourage them to contact the Governor's Office of Energy, as we have federal grants and programs that can walk them through this process, so we can try to repeat the success that we've had here. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you for coming here today. I appreciate, you see, we have some big dollars we have to spend to modernize this facility to provide the infrastructure services to the, you know, the industry we're trying to attract here. And earlier, we had the Catalyst Fund, $10 million, which is, you know, questionable legality. Maybe if a project, if that money can't be used for economic development for those purposes, do you think the state could think about reprogramming money to the local governments to help us with our infrastructure deficiencies, whether they're energy-related or so on? Because that, I think that is economic development. That's our core business, is providing this infrastructure and our public safety.
Sure. If I can, through the mayor to you, Councilman Brekis, I don't want to comment on economic development's budget, but I will tell you that the Governor's Office of Energy does have funding. We have two really dynamic programs that have brought economic development to the state. One of those is a loan guarantee program, where we can provide very low-financed loans to municipalities, to really anyone in the state who wants to pursue a renewable energy project or energy efficiency project. Those loans range in the amount from $100,000 to $1 million. And the interest rate on those cannot exceed 3% and can be negotiated lower through the Governor's Office of Energy. The other fund that we have that's kind of exciting is the Renewable Energy Tax Abatement Program that the state initiated, reduces the amount of property and sales tax renewable developers have to pay. The remaining taxes used to come to the Governor's Office of Energy and have to be used to reduce energy consumption or the amount paid for energy by ratepayers of the utility. And that money is accruing, based on a lot of projects that were built and money coming into us, and we're constantly looking for projects to spend that money to do those two missions that are mandated to us by NRS 701. So I would encourage anyone who has questions or are looking for potential funding sources to come to the Governor's Office of Energy as well, and see if there aren't other potential options to make these capital improvement projects work or to buy down costs on there. We're very excited with those opportunities.
That's great. I mean, we just gave $700,000 to a Massachusetts company. It'd be nice to have $700,000 of state money to help us do our job, too.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eddie Lorton.
I'm not going to speak.
You don't want to speak? Okay.
I have two questions about this. First of all, is this Reno's responsibility or Sparks' responsibility to monitor the Ameresco work?
Jason Geddes, for the record. It'll be a combination. We'll, project management as a CIP project.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And once, there'll be people, you know, at the plant, working on the project, dealing with the project. And we'll also be looking, you'll see a third-party consultant as part of this.
Oh, okay.
Where we'll be hiring a third-party expert.
Okay.
Who, who will assist both of us in ensuring that this project moves along. And in the past, we, we did our previous project with this company, and we actually set up weekly and monthly meetings, where every week or every month, depending on where we were in the cycle, we would sit down and talk through what happened last week, what's upcoming, and make sure that we're addressing issues as we go through.
Okay. I mean, I think the collaboration is good, I think it's under good management, it's just, you know, it takes a year on the JCC to even have a vague notion of what all these processes are, and then, did y'all see the size of this?
Yeah.
There's some complexity in here. It makes the parking kiosk agreement from before look like child's play. So, for example, on the fertilizer, where we have to go out and figure out how much fertilizer is produced, and who gets it, and weigh it, who's going to administer all that, and we have the confidence that we have the, you know, have the abilities? Because it, it's really complex.
It is complex. I think we do have the expertise, one, but two, the real guarantee that we have through here is that we're doing it as a performance contract. So for that first 15 years that we have the project, the Ameresco is financially guaranteeing that we'll meet those savings, and a component of that is the Ostera fertilizer sales.
Okay.
So they'll be monitoring that process with us, and Ostera will also be monitoring that process, because they are taking that product and they're selling it out on the market, so they need us to generate it and get it to them, so that they can make it into the fertilizer to go out and sell it.
What?
So we have a lot of people who have a stake in this exceeding.
What's the dispute resolution? That's key to me. Is, these deals, we, how do we, you know, are we comfortable we have a good workout on, I mean, to resolve, you know, differences of the fertilizers this much and we got this much?
In the Ostera contract?
Well, in general, on the whole Ameresco.
I'm not a lawyer, and you don't tend to play one.
I think that's a question we need to give them more time to be able to go through and answer.
Well, we have all the detailed calculations.
Okay.
From the last three-year operations at the plant, as to how we came up with all those numbers, and they're all in Chapter Four of the financial grade audit. And we've gone through, we've looked at it, as the Tom Wharf plant, the City of Reno engineering staff, we hired a third-party consultant to review this project. They've gone back and checked all the calculations and engineering and projections, based on the three previous year's history, and what we'll anticipate happening as this process changes with these new efficiencies going in. A, B, there is the financial guarantees built into the system for them to achieve that, and if the savings aren't achieved, that they have to financially cut that check. So that's the engineering calculation side of where we go. And as I said, we have worked with this company since 2008, and it's been working great. We're, we've hit the targets. They, they were very conservative in their estimates that they provided to us. And now for the legal answer.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
They're looking up the legal answer. Is there something else I can answer?
That's okay. I just, you know, we'll see.
Yes.
Okay. No action necessary on this?
No, we need, we need action, we need two, two motions. One motion would be to approve and accept the financial grade audit. This is what you asked us to do a year and a half ago, so we need you to accept that.
Okay.
And then the second motion would be to approve the three contracts, the performance contract with Ameresco Inc., the ongoing services contract with Ameresco, and the Ostera by-product agreement.
Okay. Chair Linder, take a motion on item number one.
I'll make that motion.
All right, have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item two.
I'll make that motion about the...
All right, second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item four. Excuse me.
Nope, we're good. That's all I needed.
Hmm.
That's what I needed. Thank you, sir.
Don't you need four?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, two motions were required. The first motion was to sub-paragraph one, and the second motion was to items two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four?
Yes. I wanted to just make sure that was the intent of the person making the motion as well.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Item J4.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Megan Solsido, Government Affairs Coordinator, for the record. Before you today, we're seeking your direction regarding items in Article Nine of the Charter, Civil Service article, that you would like to make recommendations to the Charter Committee to consider as they proceed along their work plan. As you'll recall, we were here in January, seeking your direction on items in other articles of the Charter, and we requested an extension of time regarding the Civil Service article, because the Civil Service Commission was currently evaluating and deciding on rule changes for civil service. And as you know, those rule changes are coming forward at the end of the month. And so staff has evaluated the civil service rules, the proposed rule changes, in conjunction with Article Nine of the Charter, and we have a few recommendations for council to consider. If you want me to go through each one, I can. There's three different articles we are recommending changes to. The first one concerns employees that are exempt from civil service, and just in Section 9.020, adding that any employee who is employed for less than 18 hours per week or 233 hours per fiscal year calendar quarter, that would allow some flexibility within those programs, such as summer camps, where an employee may be working more than 18 hours a week, but not more than the 233 in the quarter. The second proposal is in Section 9.100, and there's just concern that requiring medical examinations and those results to be provided to the Civil Service Commission might run afoul of federal and state medical privacy laws, so we would suggest removing that language. The third proposal has two different items in it, and it concerns appeals to the commission. The first item allows for council to hire special outside counsel to assist in an appeal if there's an irreconcilable conflict with the city attorney's office representing both the Civil Service Commission and the city on a particular matter. And then the second part within that same section just gives greater clarity to the circumstances under which the commission can modify or revoke an action taken by the city manager. So those would be our recommendations to you, and we're seeking your direction on those, as well as any others that you might want the committee to consider.
Do you need separate motions on all of those, or just one motion, take care of them?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. One motion is sufficient.
Well, I have a few questions. On the 9.7, 9.270, Sub Two, in all appeals to the commission, the city attorney shall represent the interest of the city. Now, that's been in there.
That's correct.
Unless the council retains special legal counsel under the charter, I guess, you know, has it ever come up that the commission should retain their own counsel, you know, through the budgetary allowances that the city council establishes? You know, the, the city attorney is a, is a independent elected political office, and, you know, the charter, it doesn't have, you know, it's exempt from, it's arms-length from the city manager, it's arm-length from the city council. And so it seems like, you know, it's staffed by the city attorney, and, and this is, you know, saying, well, you know, then it would have its own legal if we decide.
Megan Solsido, for the record, I would note that the charter specifies the city attorneys to represent the commission, so that's one of the city attorney's duties under Article Three outlining the city attorney's office.
The city attorney's offices, oh, okay. So this just puts in the, makes it consistent with elsewhere about how the council, the council can bring in legal counsel for anything they want.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then on the, the following four, the action by the city manager may be affirmed, modified... And then on the following four, the action by the city manager may be affirmed, modified, unless it's contrary to their Charter, any rule of city council or applicable law. You know, I'm wondering, what if the manager's acting contrary to city council direction? You know, the Charter guides the city manager, and the Charter is very silent on what are the duties of the city manager. You know, they're very broad. And I guess, you know, my question is, where's the council's authority on this? You know, direction of the council? Did that, how did this come up? How did this change come up?
I would turn to Ms. Matievich to answer that specific question.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I can assist with that question in some ways. Most of the matters that come before civil service do not require a matter that council would get direct, uh, direction on. It's employment matters that, under the Charter, that the city manager would have authority over.
Okay. And why, why is this last phrase in, and is subject to judicial review pursuant to nine point two eight oh of the Charter? I mean, why are we going, why are we going there if it's elsewhere in the Charter?
The judicial review is of the Civil Service Commission's determination on an employee matter that is before it. And the legislature wanted review, administrative review of that. And that section that it references, references the law that allows basically a writ to take it up to District Court to determine whether Civil Service Commission acted arbitrary and capricious. So there is a cross-reference for the reader to understand how that works.
Okay. And it's not, at present, it goes to the city, it's not appealable to the city council? Is that the clarity it's firming up essentially?
Well, you are accurate. It never has been appealable to the city council because the city council could oversee the manager. It always has been separately appealable to the court itself.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Chair Linder, ten motion?
George is the liaison to the Civil Service Commission, and Hin is absent, so I will make the motion.
Okay. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to, oh, item K one, boards and commission appointments, recreation parks and commission.
That's fine. Can I wait on that?
You want to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, continue. Item K one B, downtown police assessment.
I'll make the motion to appoint Randy Riley.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. K one C, Western Regional Water Commission. Yep.
Okay, I'll make that motion myself. And Mayor Martini?
Second.
Mayor Martini?
Well, that's what it says here.
I think they already did that.
I know, it says first.
Okay, all right. Okay. Motion, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item K two.
Is that for home and sorcery?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to appoint, uh, what's his name?
Don Welsh.
Don Welsh.
I'm sorry, it's Don Welsh. And he apologized, he had a meeting, had to leave, so.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of merit, council items, and future agendas. Anything you ought to put on specifically? Okay. Any liaison reports? Ms. Brackus, you have any? Ms. Ad...
The JCC today, and that's one that's been on my mind, but no.
Okay. Ms. Adria, you have any? Mr. Delgado? Ms. Jordan?
Nope.
And we covered the police.
Ms. Shevy?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'll just go back on the maintenance special assessment district. We're going to reconvene that working group. I don't know if that was clear for that item, but the, the plan has been, because we set up both working groups to look at both maintenance districts. The plan is that staff has, and the agreement was, once the police gets done, they start the same working group on the maintenance to look at, you know, how that's working.
Good. All right, any reports on conferences or professional meetings?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
As we know, last week, the Shared Federal Framework Group went to Washington DC, and unfortunately, many of our representatives got weathered out. We arrived in time for one of their big storms in DC, but I think that actually worked to our benefit. We had, as I quickly referenced a little bit earlier today, we had four counties and three cities, including Carson City, Reno and Sparks. The counties were Lyon, Douglas, Washo, and, how am I missing one? Story. TRPA, FLED, RTC, University of Nevada, DRI, all of the players that we had talked about before. And how that, that weathered out on Monday may have helped us. That entire city of Washington DC closes down for about what, in my mind's eye, looked like four to six inches of snow on the ground. But there was ice underneath it, so, okay. But because of the closure, the staff for the many elected officials that we were meeting with, both from the Congress as well as the Senate, the staffs had to kind of get caught up. So it gave the congressmen and senators a little bit more flexibility in their schedules. So we were visited and visited with everything from transportation to finance to commerce to energy to interior. We had very good attendance and discussions with the various departments. It was incredibly useful, the comments that many of the delegates from the, this locally here, you'll be hearing from them, they were just really, really impressed. And I think Senator Reed said it best when we met with him. He held up the book, and he said that he had been reviewing it, and that it was very encouraging, and that they'd never seen anything like that before. And he thinks that it will be a really good start for the work that we have to do. And as I also mentioned earlier, a couple of us were able to spin off and even get over to Commerce and met with the agency there for economic development and got some really good input on our sets. They're very excited for that progressing. So it was, it was very well received by Capitol Hill.
Good, good. Any other discussion?
Just really quickly.
Yes.
On Monday, I just want to let you know, you guys will be excited to hear this. Julie Towler and Jonathan Shipman and Tracy Chase sat down with Mr. White, and it was a very, very good meeting, and there was a lot of cooperation. And, and I have to say, our staff was, you guys were amazing. And you just were so compassionate. And I think we got it done, what, an hour and a half? Yeah. So, I mean, it's some big steps, but I just wanted to say that we have an amazing staff for doing that and getting that done, because I know it's been like 12 years in the making. So, thank you.
Super. All right.
Be happy.
Yes.
You're happy.
All right, move to item L four. Discussion potential direction to the city manager, usually two or more hours staff time to work with residents to initiate a study regarding annexation of Collin Ranch. That is, there's been several people that live in Collin Ranch that would like to have some inquiry and would like to look at it.
Should they come to us, Mr. Mayor? I mean, I just, I...
I just told them I would initiate something, and we would start meeting with them.
You know, I, I don't think we should ask them to come because annexation is really complicated in the way it gets done. It can be done by a petition, but usually you need one owner. You can't have any protesters, Cold Springs. It can be done by, cities have powers.
Yep.
West Plum Lane. It can be done through the regional planning process. So there's just a lot of complexity to it. I like the regional plan process through the joint planning process, which was, been done. But maybe staff could lay out some of the options of annexation that would be, you know, within our purview to do this.
I just wanted, what I really wanted to find out if some of, if some of the people in Collin Ranch, if they're really interested. I mean, they've stopped, they've stopped me, they've called me and everything else wanting to look at it. So I told them that I would bring it up, and we'd look at it.
And you're talking about the portion of Collin Ranch that is within the ranch that was going to come into the sphere of influence when the ranch was built, but the 2002 plan settlement rolled it out? That's the portion you're talking about, right? Or Lama Hill? Or are you talking about Lama Hill above Gom and all that? Because that's outside of Collin Ranch.
That's right.
Both.
But there's, the area I live is out of Collin Ranch, but it is Collin Ranch.
Okay.
The other is all in Collin Ranch.
Okay.
And it's got signs showing where the city limits and all that stuff.
So both of those areas.
I just want us to be very careful in how the language is crafted around this, because we've been very careful in my entire time on the council to let residents know the city does not initiate annexation. It's because someone came to us, and you're saying this is...
I'm not initiating annexation. I'm just saying, let's find out.
Right.
If there's an appetite by the homeowners and stuff.
And that's what, and that's what, we need to make sure the language is really clear that we're responding to resident request.
Well, wait a second. Then you are talking of one mechanism of annexation, which is voluntary annexation. And is that the policy of the city council, that all annexations are voluntary? I'm just asking.
It certainly has been.
Because if you have 200 property owners and you have one protestant, the annexation fails under that policy. If, if that's the way that we want to...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fred Turner, Community Development Director. The way we're reading this, this request from city council is that all those options are open, from the voluntary annexation to the involuntary annexation, and that what we're providing back to you is just the initial analysis of two hours or more of what the options are for the city council to consider future actions. We're, we're not taking this as, let's knock on a door and see if you want to annex. We're taking this as, there are processes, and some are complex, like the involuntary annexation process. And we could just bring options before the city council for that.
And what the public process would be.
And what the public process would be required to be.
Right.
I'm not going to tell them to do it. I've just had people wanting to know.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's what I'm asking, that we really make clear in our discussion and language so that people who aren't familiar with the activities suddenly think, oh, great, here goes the city trying to annex us again.
Yeah. Okay. Will I make a motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Item L five.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I have to say something. I feel really bad. I forgot Michael Trump whenever we were talking about Mr. White. But also, Mr. Shipman thought that the model was so, was done so well, that they put together that they would use it all over the country for artists and the artist ordinance. So anyway, thank you, Michael Trump. I forgot you, and I really apologize.
Boy, dude, you've got feelings, huh?
Well, that's very, that's very emotional, emotional. That one's emotional for me.
I know it is.
That one's emotional.
I know it is. Ms. Brackus?
Well, this was an idea that, you know, kind of came to me when I read an article in the paper a couple, last year sometime, about cities that are adopting poet laureates. So I thought maybe we could send it down to the Arts and Culture Commission to kick it around and say, you know, is it a good idea? What are the parameters? Here's how other cities do it. Maybe you pay them, you know, $500 a year, or maybe it's honorary, it's a two-year period. You know, when the mayor goes out on a ribbon-cutting venture, you know, for a house, you know, a housewarming thing, someone reads a poem, they don't have to create it. It can be about home and the hearth. And so it's just, it's just an idea to kind of bring the value of poetry to our operations. And I thought maybe the Arts and Culture Commission would take a look at it.
That'd be great.
Great, yeah.
I thought maybe Chief Pitt was going to be our poor lawyer.
I'll try out, sir.
I saw him jumping up here, so I just, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Ms. Brackus, item L six.
Well, a constituent got to me a couple weeks ago and said, up, there's just always a lot of abandoned vehicles up on his street. It was Summit Ridge. And I noticed on those Reno Direct statistics, abandoned vehicles get a lot of calls. And I was trying to figure out, what is that? I mean, I don't believe there's a theft problem because you don't hear a lot about that. I, I, someone told me they thought it's people trying to dispose of cars. And I'm just wondering, does the city incur a cost in getting rid of these cars? And is the VIN number stripped? And maybe we can do this in a 30-second response from the chief.
I got that, ma'am. Mr. Mayor and Council, Steve Pitt's on behalf of the Reno Police Department. The numbers are up from 2010, and, but the process has changed, Mrs. Brackus. Let me just explain those two things. We, in 2011, we had about 1,014 calls that went through Reno Direct where we took action. We actually went out, issued a 48-hour citation, returned within 48 hours, and most of those vehicles were gone. In 2013, with the numbers you were looking at, it's almost like four times the increase, just over 4,000 requests through Reno Direct. But SAVE, our SAVE program helps manage abandoned vehicles. So what they do now is they go out, take a look at the vehicles there, they come back within a day or two, and in most cases, those vehicles have moved. And the numbers I have, we're still crunching some numbers for you and council, is in about only 15% of those 4,000 cases, which is about 680, which is less than what we did in '11, actually, was there any action or enforcement taken. So the cost incurred right now is CSO, I mean, the SAVE program is volunteers. They carry the heavy weight for us on the front end. And then if there's a request for action, it goes to our CSO ones. And so I can crunch the numbers on that cost, but that's what they do. That's what CSO ones do.
Well, my question's really, say we have 680 vehicles left on city streets, how do we get them off the city streets? Where, who does that?
Well, we do. And, and what we end up doing, we take actions, we can tow our site. And I'll have to crunch more numbers for you.
Where do you take them?
Well, we have a tow contract with several tow companies, and they're towed to whatever tow company's on call.
So there's a budget that we spend on towing abandoned vehicles out of the city of Reno each year?
It is, but the costs are incurred by the registered owner on the tow.
Oh, then you charge them back?
No, they're, they're charged by the tow, by the tow company, ma'am. So really, the front-end costs are for the CSO ones to go out and issue a citation or decide to tow a vehicle that's abandoned.
So say it costs $200 to tow them, how much of that $200 do we get back from these car owners? And, and are the car owner, cars often stripped of any identification so you can't figure out?
Right.
And we eat it? Is that?
No, I wouldn't say most of the abandoned vehicles are, are stolen, car dumps, used for crime. You know, I don't know, I can't really touch on all the variables, but I'm going to tell you, with the economy the way that it is, what we've seen is a lot of people are storing their extra vehicles, RVs and things like that on the street to save money. That's potentially one variable that's, that's made a significant difference here.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess that's good enough. I mean, maybe there'll be some follow-up questions on the budgetary implications of this.
I'll, I'll take a look at the tow costs, and if there's any way legally we could incur a percentage of that.
But 600 cars a year, I mean, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item L seven, Mr. Delgado.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. I was looking to get a report regarding the closure, potential closure of the overflow homeless shelter, and, and seeing what we can do as a staff, or if there's any long-term goals in a sense of what we're going to be doing once this overflow homeless shelter is closed down.
I definitely think we need to look into it and see what it would cost us and stuff like that, and what it does for us. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. We could put a memo together to explain what the, the plan is for the overflow, also the results of our Transitional Governing Board meeting regarding direction to look at permanent financing for the CAC, the Community Assistance Center, the triage and the overflow. And, and come back with, with a memo. And at that time, if council desires an actual staff report, we can present before the council.
We just need to know also what it's going to cost to go forward with it if we have to...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. L8, Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, this is just a continuation of something that I initiated a while back with regards to a homeless task force. And names were submitted to the city manager's office and I just wanted to have a follow-up as to where we stood in the process.
Okay, all right. Item L9, Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, this is for a zone amendment for Y property, this amendment is one that is most likely to occur during the university master plan process, but the developer of this in order to initiate and create jobs and move his property, I'd like to initiate this amendment.
Okay. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. L10, Ms. Sheevy. Oh, we've got one public comment. Mr. Lorton.
For the record, my name's Eddie Lorton. And I also, so we're back to the ADP thing. I'm glad we could maybe take some time to look at this thing. And I also wondered back on E2, why we don't include the $237,000 from Arrow Tech in the total cost of what AT's, ADP is going to cost. So that was part of the cost. All they did was work on ADP, but it's never added into the total. I know it was a different company, but I hope we consider that. And when people like, you know, Mr. Cadillac got a $14 check and it was 3,000 short, we need to address the fact that there are shortages and problems with the system. So I hope that's in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sheevy?
Yes, I'd like an update on how you think the process is coming along. When they were here last time, we, we had a little bit of a rocky road, so. Can, can you give me a little, little update?
Okay, we have a motion, have a second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those oppose, no. There is no public hearing at 6 o'clock. We are now going to reset. Whoops, excuse me, there's Mr. Wilkinson, you wish to speak.
Good day, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and the city attorneys. My name's Barton Wilkinson. I go by the moniker of simple guitar player. And I just simply wanted to reaffirm my support for Steve Wright's position in the negotiations that the city attorney is having regarding the artistic expression. The Ninth Court has, has ruled that artistic expression is a human right or constitutional right. And Mr. White has indicated that negotiations are going well. And just wanted to say, I'm glad to hear it.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your time and...
Thank you very much. All right, we'll be in recess and re-...
Adjourn.
...the council.
We'll adjourn and then we'll open a new meeting.
You want to do that?
Uh-huh.
We can do it that way if you want, but...
Yeah.
All right, we're going to motion to adjourn. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go into the redevelopment agency. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Sheevy?
Here.
Brackus?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Delgado? Dorch? Absent. Jordan?
Here.
Here. The, been recommended this item be pulled so the chair would entertain a motion to pull this item.
So...
Have a motion, second. Second. All in favor, say aye.